It might be a future.
I'm sorry?
It might be a future.
Well, why don't we go ahead and meet the meeting? The record show that council members follow myself personally. And first item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the subcommittee on items that do not appear on today's agenda, they do so, but just limit them to things that are not on the agenda. Do you? Yes.
Yeah, so I know item 3B is related to another thing on Harper's, but I won't really touch on that right. What I'd like to do is first of all, thank my fellow board members and council members, and indicate, for example, David, one of the things I'd like to see is the city's regular newsletter reflecting these water and sewer projects started as defined by the capital development project, and how newly injected federal and state infrastructure dollars have been applied more than half or significantly more rate increases. Folks like Melanie, they talked about SMART, and I'd like to see WIS and revised dates for SMART in Cloverdale as a result of the new federal funding. I've been looking for an answer, I haven't got it yet from those running that. Melanie also said back on June that the Capital High and Water Grant is for infrastructure, and it appears that the first $1 million, $2 million arrived three weeks after she made this comment until our first in the form of Harper's, hence the note in the file that sent. They also apparently received an $1 million grant several times in March, and PG&E settlement funds are also listed prior to Melanie's dismissal of using 40 infrastructure dollars for water and sewer projects. So one of the things I'm big on is both infrastructure dollars, I'd like to see no more big increase by 22% scheduled for this coming July, based on over $2 million in federal funding that would be here by July 1st, that more than covers the next two years of capital projects that were laid out by the previous city directors that was in charge back. On resilience and safety, I'd like to see, based on past reports of constrained fire hydrant flows due to either size of water conductions, but the water budget addresses to making sure that the fire hydrants in certain parts of town can support responding to the fire calls. And on drought declarations, that was another point that I've been interested in working at the city, is where can we stand with recital water, rainwater capture, underground water storage, and water transfers between towns and the deal, like they're doing up in Men Street County. I guess the good news is through November 9th, more rain has fallen this rainy season than fell through March 15th of the last rainy season. Remember, rain ages, my neighbor said, will start from a whole 14 inches of rain so far this year, which is a good start to the rainy season. Also in economics, unlike the city of Santa Rosa, Cloverdale returns 20% of the water drawn from the rushing river back into the river. So should this as a consequence lower the rates or prevent further increases in water rates for total savings? On missing water, I asked for a public records request, and I got some tap reports. I think Irene is no longer around, which is really important, and it looks like 5 million gallons of water are undeterred and unveiled annually in the city. And as well, 40 million gallons of water are lost annually, and I've not got a response yet for that question yet on the agenda. And that's based on four tap reports that the city provided for '16, '17, '18, and '19, and I'm waiting for the 2020 tap report to see if you had any, excuse me, improvements there. Last but not least, on the future, I'd like to see us look at the backup water supply source, look for tapping into a little bit of Lake Simona, of course, once it shuts off again, and see that as a local backup supply of water to mitigate the need for moving water back and forth between towns and just as bad here in Cloverdale. And last but not least, I know Kevin's within to this, I believe, is installation of rainwater devices for some of the homeowners that it can easily do, maybe under their showers under the home, you can install rainwater devices that, you know, help relieve that pressure on water systems. So that was my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you, Walter. A big, a big item. And I can tell you that with the infrastructure money, we will be accountable for a penny of that. And the rest of the information, I would think, is, would take quite a bit of time to put together for you, but I'm sure we will be able to do that somewhere.
As you agree, yeah, I'm sure for the Cloverdale, it's not necessarily the Chinese thing. And I do like the fact that with all of this money, what I think Melanie's on one hit, the Capital High and Long Hits, the one that I'm repaying, I'd rather see the rate bears not penalized from a 22% increase this coming July, I'd rather see these millions of dollars being applied to the water projects, and the rate increase is not either zero out or significantly less than the 22% increase. Thank you.
And I think as a council, I agree with you, and I'm a fellow council member, I also agree that we don't want to raise rates 20%.
Councilmember Walters, yeah, this is Yvonne, the city clerk. So if we could have the audience, when they need to speak, to tell their name first, so that the audience knows who's speaking, and also it's being recorded, and when you have your mask on, it's really hard to hear in that room, if maybe they could sit up at the front chair when they have something to say, that would help out making sure everybody is aware of what's going on and what's being said.
Thank you, Yvonne. My name is Rob Kozlofski, K O S M W S K Y, Rob Kozlofski, and I'm on item 3B in the package.
3B, okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address? I'm sorry, do you have any copy of the number? I do.
Testing, testing.
Oh, thank you.
And if anybody needs to have a microphone?
Yes.
To come in and help?
Yes, thank you.
If there's nothing else, no other public comments, why don't we move to communications? And there is actually two communications, any comment on either one of those?
Well, he just spoke, Rob just spoke on item 3B, so we're back up to 3A.
Yeah, I know Brad is here. Is this the point in time when you'd like to do your presentation, or would that appeal? Yeah. Well, go ahead, Brad.
All right. Brad Horowitz, my name, and I'm here as a Cloverdale resident for almost 20 years, and I've been playing pickleball now happily for about two years. I just recently became the USA Pickleball Association Ambassador for Cloverdale, which sounds like a lot of big words, but it's really a small job. My job really is just to promote pickleball in Cloverdale. I just noticed I have red wine stains on my notes, is something, right? In the right county. I'm here speaking on behalf of about 20 local avid pickleball players. But before we jump into the slideshow, I want to have a little video, it's a one-minute video that was played on CNN Health Minute a couple of years ago, to give you an idea of what pickleball is about. That's okay, we'll go.
Today, you want things to be on autopilot.
And you want to maximize that.
With IBM, you can do both. Bringing data together across court helps you modernize operations so you can keep those wheels moving.
It's the sport with a funny name, pickleball. It's a combination of tennis, ping pong, and badminton. You need a plastic ball, a paddle, and a small version of a tennis court.
It's an underhand serve, so people with bad shoulders can play. You don't move around a whole lot, so people with bad knees can play.
It's not just a game for the over 50 crowd, but it is more forgiving than other racket sports like tennis or racquetball. 73-year-old Bill Hess recently had a partial knee replacement, but is now back at it. He likes the camaraderie.
Watch this!
Good game!
Everybody has fun. You hear all the laughing out here. You miss a shot, and you all laugh. You don't laugh at one another, you laugh together.
Bill also likes the competition. He and his wife both play.
We play together, and we play against each other. I'm not sure which is more fun, actually.
Pickleball is helping David Dunn, who has a history of heart disease.
I get a lot of exercise. I've lost weight. I just feel a lot fitter. It's just, it's such a great game to play.
And it's easy to learn. If you have a little hand-eye coordination, you can be playing the game within 15 minutes.
It's a very addictive sport.
For today's Health Minute, I'm Holly Furfur.
All right, thank you, Yvonne. Now, to jump into the slideshow, I was, I wasn't first. I was a mid-manager. And as a mid-manager, I reported directly to my department head. My department head always told me, don't come to me with a problem. Come to me with a problem and options for solutions. So that's what I'm here to do today. You can go to the next slide.
Oops, excuse me, there we go.
Back one more.
Oh, okay.
No, still one more.
Oh, the solution.
It should have been the one right after pickleball in Cloverdale, that's where it would be. There we go. There. There. A little too fast, Yvonne. Yeah.
Have one? One more?
There we are. Okay. So the first problem I want to talk about is there are no outdoor recreational facilities for senior citizens in Cloverdale. There is baseball, softball, basketball, volleyball, and soccer for non-seniors at city parks. Senior citizens do play tennis, but the only tennis courts are at the high school and not at city parks. I am a lifelong tennis player, and I converted to pickleball a couple of years ago, because honestly, it's more fun, it's more social, and it's less competitive. Our pickleball group of 20 people, all of us are over the age of 60 and some more. Next slide. So the solution for no sports for seniors in Cloverdale, obviously, is pickleball. Pickleball is a great game for all ages. It can accommodate lots of players, it's easy to learn, and it's easy on the body. There are many options for kids and young adults for outdoor sports in Cloverdale, but there's nothing for we senior citizens. Pickleball fills this void. Pickleball also is great for people of all ages. It's much easier to learn than tennis, and you can be playing in 15 minutes. It's real quick to catch on to. Next slide. So another problem is there's no permanent place in town to play pickleball. Every other city in Sonoma County has pickleball courts. Roderick Park just finished a complex of pickleball courts that cost them well over $1 million. Windsor is adding four courts to their already existing six courts, and Healdsburg and Park and Rec have this on the agenda tomorrow night to talk about building courts in Healdsburg. And I hope all of the committee was able to read the article in the PD about the number of players in Santa Rosa. On weekdays at Finn Park, where most of the courts are, they have 40 to 50 players in a day come out each morning to play, and more on weekends. They're jammed. In fact, they just went to the city council and got approval to line two more courts, make eight more courts down there, because they don't have enough courts. The Hittah Healdsburg Pickleball Club, of which I'm also a member, has over 100 participants. In Cloverdale, right now, we've got about 20 players. And the big but is, we kind of keep this quiet because we don't have the space to handle more players. We play sometimes at Vintage Meadows Park, and I can't tell you how often we have people stop by and ask what's going on, and there's a lot of interest. And I know that if we had courts and put something in the news, that we'd have people coming out of the woodwork, wanting to play, wanting to have lessons, and that's my goal, would be to set all of that up as ambassador. So the solution to this is to build at least two new pickleball courts. We do have temporary courts at Vintage Meadows Park, city painted lines for us. We set up portable nets, but it takes about 30 minutes to set the nets up and take them down. And even more so, this does not open pickleball up to the community. We bought our own nets, and we take them down and take them home when we're done, so other people, unless they have their own net, are unable to play pickleball. Permanent dedicated courts would be so much better. Next slide. This is a picture at Vintage Meadows Park of one of the courts that the city painted lines for us. It works great, as long as you have your own net. On to the next one. So for two pickleball courts, you need an area that's 60 feet by 60 feet. The dimensions of a pickleball court are the same as a basketball court, they're 44 feet long and 20 feet wide. Next slide. So the question is, where can new courts be located? Well, actually, the new courts can be located at any of these three parks. Next slide, please. I took my tape measure and went to all three of these parks to make sure that there was room, and found at City Park, pickleball courts could go where the basketball courts are now. However, those courts are not in very good shape, and would have to be demolished, which would add to the cost of the project. At Ferber Park, there's enough room where the sand pit is located. The sand pit is 60 feet by 30 feet, with enough room to expand to 60 by 60. However, there's no room there for more than two courts. The rest of the park is used for baseball, soccer, and kids' play equipment. So Vintage Meadows Court is the ideal spot for it, in my opinion. There, we could put two courts in the grass area that's at the north end of the park, and there's lots of room for additional courts as the possibility grows. If we could see the next picture, please. This is the sand pit at Ferber Park. It's 30 feet wide and 60 feet long, and there would be easily 15 feet on either side of the width of that to expand it to 60 by 60. The only issue I saw was there's a drainage soil, it's sort of down in the lower right corner of that sand pit, and it probably has to be dealt with. The next picture is at Vintage Meadows Park, and this is the large grass area that's at the north end of the park. That's foothill at the top of the picture. This part, this area of the park is not used right now, but they don't play soccer out there, they don't play baseball out there. This would be a great spot to put pickleball courts, and I would recommend putting the courts halfway between the two streets that border the park and right close to that sidewalk. Next, please. Now we can talk about costs. So I didn't want to come to you without some knowledge of what an approximate cost would be for doing pickleball courts. So I contacted two different contractors and asked them to give me a cost estimate without wasting a whole lot of time, just to ballpark. Neither of them made site visits. I did send them pictures of the park and of the sand pit, of Vintage Meadows and Sand Pit. Vintage Contractors out of San Francisco was the contractor who rebuilt the tennis courts at the high school back in 2009. So I contacted them, and their estimate to do two pickleball courts was $125,000. And that was complete, that was all of the groundwork, the paving, the surfacing, nets, and fencing. Then I contacted Johnny Cole. Johnny has been doing tennis courts since I moved to Sonoma County in 1972. He had a little tennis shop that was out on Sonoma Avenue, and he surfaced courts as well, so he's still in the business. So Johnny said he would use, besides himself, he would use two other contractors, somebody to do the ground craft and the paving, a fencing company out of Santa Rosa, and then he would do the court's surface and provide the nets, the sleeves for the nets that actually go on the surface and everything, and that cost is just a little under $75,000. So the next slide, which is a problem, that's a lot of money. When we rebuilt the Cloverdale High School tennis courts back in 2009, it cost a quarter of a million dollars. At the time, the city, the school district, and the Cloverdale Tennis Association paid for that, who also got a $35,000 grant from the United States Tennis Association that went towards that. The USA Pickleball Association offers grants of $250. So they're not going to be of any help. Other grants that the Parks and Rec Department might be able to obtain, I am not aware of, that's not my area. So I do have a less expensive option. One tennis court can accommodate four pickleball courts. The tennis court would be of dual use, both tennis and pickleball. The only public tennis courts are at the high school, and the PE classes use the tennis courts for two weeks every year, that's it. That's 10 days. The high school tennis team has about five home matches, that's five more days, that's the only time in the year that all five courts are ever used at one time. Never are the courts all full with local tennis players at one time. So this is how you make four pickleball courts on one tennis court. The dash line in the middle of that picture, the black line, is the tennis net, and you leave that up, it keeps the balls from rolling into the court behind you. It's a barrier. Then you paint lines for the other four courts, and again, I took the tape measure and went down to the high school and measured the court to make sure it would fit, and it does no problem. Next slide, please. So this is what it looks like, an area, you can see the tennis net is still there, there's four pickleball courts, and there's the tennis court. So you can use it for both. Next slide. So the cost for this, again, I asked Vintage Contractors, since they resurfaced the courts just a few years ago at the high school. They said to take one court, to resurface it and color it like that previous photo, would cost about $12,000. We would then need four portable nets, which cost $2,500 at a piece. The nets roll out of the way, so you can play tennis. So the total cost for this option is $25,000. But I have one more option. All we really would need to do is just paint lines for the four courts without resurfacing. To paint lines would be about $4,000, and the cost of the four courts, including new nets, the roll-away nets, would be under $15,000. However, there is a problem. Currently, the public is not allowed on the high school campus during school hours, and we senior citizens like to play pickleball on weekdays. Previously, the Cloverdale Tennis Association was able to play during the week at the high school. When we rebuilt the courts, we had a joint statement from the city, the school district, and the tennis association, that we could use the courts during the week if we met certain criteria, which we did. However, when the pandemic hit and the school closed the campus, we totally lost that ability to play at the high school any longer. And even though school is now back in session, they still don't want adults on the campus. But I have a solution. Pickleball players would access the courts from the adjacent field, which is to the west of the tennis courts. We would not pass through the high school campus at all. So this picture is a picture of the tennis courts. I'm standing at the tennis court that's closest to the classroom. The one that's furthest away is where I would propose we turn that into pickleball courts. That is, we're looking west here. What you can't really see very well in this picture is back in the far right corner, where the shade of that tree is, there's a gate that opens up out to that field. And that gate is kept locked at all times. So, next slide, please. So my suggestion would be pickleball players would park on the street, walk across that field, and come in through that gate. There are other gates that open onto the campus, we would leave those remain blocked all the time, and we would never be on any other part of the campus. Now, I understand this would have to be negotiated with the school district. One positive thing is, I think the school district might be able, interested in sharing the cost of this, because pickleball is being taught in lots of high schools and lots of schools. In fact, my son-in-law is a high school PE teacher in Massachusetts, and that's his favorite unit of the year to teach his students. As far as other fundraising or money, I know that the city has plans for a multi-use court at Ferber Park. My feeling is we do not need another basketball or volleyball court, we already have those in other city parks, and use that money instead for pickleball courts. Another option is perhaps there are grants that are available, and I'm sure our group of pickleball players would be willing to contribute some as well, although I don't think we'd get up to $125,000. So to sum up, we would like two beautiful pickleball courts at Vintage Meadows Park, but we would be happy with four hybrid courts at the high school if that can be worked out. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Brad Horowitz, for giving that presentation. It's nice to have somebody come to the table with solutions opposed to just requests. So let me open it up to my fellow council member and staff to see if there's any questions before I turn it over to the public. I know I have a public.
Yeah, definitely, thank you, Chair Walter. Just a couple of comments. I'm a little concerned, first of all, the school district would definitely have to be brought into the conversation. There are laws, Megan's law, that requires certain things to be done before an adult can actually access schools and campuses during school, and that was one of the big obstacles with our tenants project, as you recall. So I'm not sure it's going to be quite that easy to be able to, it's still part of the school, and students are still in that area, so that may be problematic. Having the temporary courts the way they're set up, I see that being problematic in the sense, but that's really the only place that we have basketball available, courts. We have in the city parks, not where you can play a game, it's more hoops, or over at Vintage Meadows, you could actually play a game. So they're used frequently after school, I see, quite a bit, so that's probably a good temporary solution, but it's not a long-term one. The other thing, my other concern, recent tennis court, would be if somebody's playing tennis, you go out there, you have one court that's being joined use with a tennis game going, and you have people showing up to play pickleball, but that court's being occupied already, there could be a problem with that. My preference would be to see some dedicated courts and to move in that direction, so we would be able to explore that further. I do like the idea of looking at Ferber Park, I think that Sam, from my observations, that sandbox is way underutilized, it's not used at all, actually.
It catches.
So that would be a good spot to take that look at. So those are my comments.
Thank you, councilmember. Just a couple. Brad, any of your members out in the county, were they all state residents, in your opinion?
We probably have some in the cabinet. In fact, one of our players comes up in Windsor.
Because one of the things I always like to do, especially when it comes to parks and recs, is to try and bring Supervisor Lawrence, I hate to say it this way, but his county votes new city facilities, so they have no facilities out here other than the River Park, and there's really no sports activities there. So we can bring the county in, that might help with some of the funding. Secondly, you know, the Second Street Park, City Park, that basketball hoop section is used, it's there quite a bit, as is the volleyball court. I also like the possibility of Ferber Plaza, not, I'm sorry, the field, to go ahead and use that, get rid of those sandboxes, because you're right, the only ones that use that are cats. As far as the Vintage Meadows goes, that grassy area really is, at this point, underutilized. I'm surprised we don't see more soccer practices there, but I think the day will come, we will be used to that. So if we were to do anything there, I'd rather have it on one side, keep one side grassy. So those are the only comments I have. You know, I'd be in favor of pursuing the Ferber Park area first, before we do the campus. The only other thing, and we had talked about possibly having, first of the year, revisiting the master plan for the city park, maybe with those portion courts on that. I don't know that anybody that plays portion would even want to rock on, so that might be a possibility as well. Well, why don't we go ahead and open it up to the public, and then we can kind of give direction to the staff after this, see how we want to go with it. So is there anyone? Please, just identify your.
Good afternoon, my name is Melissa Cox, and I am one of the pickleballers, and I just wanted to respond to Joe's comment about pickleball players and tennis players having issues with courts. There are many cities that just have hours for pickleball players and hours to tennis players, and it seems to work just fine. Can be worked out.
And especially if there's only one court, that may be good, because there could be a sign posted there.
And just, just in response to that, and the reason I said that, because we dealt with those courts, that's all about districts, and we have a question. And the reason I said that is because we don't have those courts, that's all about districts and the management question. So it's hard if you don't have full control.
Hi, my name's Tony Martinez. I am resident of Clover, or, National de amigos, I live on Ferber Lane. I see the park all the time over there in that area. I do support, uh, pickleball being played in town. It's a great sport. I like playing it. I did every once in a while, but it is a tough spot to find. Uh, but I'd still rather support a multi-use court on Ferber Park. I see kids there gathering on the field with the basketball, and I know kids on the south end of town cannot make it to a basketball court, which is the closest one to the Vintage Meadows. Uh, even if you look at Vintage Meadows, there's toddlers there with their parents just doing hot laps around exercising. A lot of parents and kids don't have that option in the south end of town, so I just like to voice more support for multi-use courts up in Ferber Park.
Hi, I'm Russell Lemley, and, um, I'm also in support of keeping the basketball courts open. Um, I know it brings the community together. Um, I mean, just today, they raised 1,600. They take a bus to the football away game on Friday, and they're hours on Facebook, but I was, uh, taking my six-year-old to a basketball class up in Windsor, or down in Windsor, and, um, they said, we've got a lot of kids from Cloverdale there, and, uh, she mentioned that she should start a, a, a class up in Cloverdale. And I told her it's hard to find a court that everyone uses, the basketball court.
Hi, uh, my name is Francisco Valencia, um, grew up in, uh, Cloverdale my whole life. And I would say, you know, would, uh, I appreciate the time that you took to write that letter. I read the letter. It's a great letter. Um, uh, pickleball, everybody deserves their space. Uh, I'm not really in favor of exclusionary at the moment, simply because, you know, it's tough to find space. Tough to find opportunities to go play, to do what you want to do, whatever activity that may be. Uh, I'm more supportive for a multi-use facility, because then it opens it up, because not everybody's using it. At those, you know, everybody's, the kids that are going to school, I mean, nobody's using the court. Saturday morning, kids, or kids aren't out there till mid-morning, so, um, there'll be, you know, I, I think the natural fluctuation of people's time would allow for scheduling times on the courts, uh, and still allow for everybody to indulge in the community. I, I just don't really support the fact of excluding certain people as a community. I think it's, you know, better suited to be more inclusive and work together to find a solution as opposed to, uh, you know, singling people out, because, I mean, Cloverdale's a great community, and that's one thing we do. When we come together on an idea, we can execute it very well.
Well, well, thank you. I, I really have to agree, um, I don't mind excluding anyone. And technically, we really only have one basketball park in Cloverdale, that's one, in Vintage Meadows. Um, but if we were to do something to a joint, uh, court down on Ferber Park, I like Melissa's idea of putting the sign up that pickleball hours are such and such, and then open it up to, uh, basketball, so. Anyone else want to make a comment?
But I just have a comment. I'm like, we don't have basketball courts at Ferber Park, you know, always.
We don't, no. I'm saying if we were to build a court there.
At some, yeah.
It should be multi-use.
I understand. Okay. I just try to, in my head, figure out, because I agree. We, you need to have a variety of things to do. Again, that doesn't take away from the need for the pickleball in the best location to put that at this point. Recognizing that the master plan for City Park does fall to redo the basketball, and it actually has regulation-sized courts. What is there? That's something we're going to, we, does the law think it'll look at, again? That is often brought in order, and that's been identified. So we're sure of that.
Chair, if you'd like staff to provide, uh, just an overview perspective on some of the work we're doing to accommodate both basketball as well as pickleball, if you'd like.
Yeah, just to be one second, to see if there's any other comments, uh, they want to talk to the subject. Uh, you know, I think you have a supportive city council, anything you can do to, uh, improve the recreation, recreational pages here in Cloverdale would be helped to do. It oil, it always boils down to money and space, uh, but I, I think we should put something together on this one. So, please, uh, Kevin, if you'd like to, I'm sorry, uh, David, if you'd like to share with us.
Thank you, Chair Walter, council member. Uh, for the audience, I'm, I'm giving, uh, city manager, and I'm just going to provide an overview on city, city plans for some of the improvements we're making at, at our, at our parks. Uh, in the audience is Hector Galvin, he's our, our park maintenance lead, and, and he may chime in as well. Um, we've got a couple of projects that are in the works. I'll start with City Park. There is an existing asphalt area that provides, uh, opportunities for, for basketball. We, uh, 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 with the support of council, we submitted a grant application, a grant application for capital grant to redo the basketball surface, um, that, that project is very active, and we, we anticipate bringing that forward uh, as early as spring of next year to do the actual work to, uh, improve the asphalt and, and really build a dedicated, uh, basketball facility with the opportunity to have striping for, uh, pickleball. Uh, so that, 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 that plan is in the works, uh, we are moving forward and making progress on that. Uh, likewise, uh, with respect to Ferber Park, there is, uh, everyone identified, there is an existing area that we call Sand Pit. Uh, we do have in the, in the current fiscal year, 2122 budget, uh, $50,000 allocated to, uh, building a, or constructing an asphalted surface to support, uh, both basketball and pickleball at the time. Uh, and, and, and it would be striped, so they can permit both of those opportunities at that particular location. Right now, I think, given the somewhat, uh, constraints of the site, we, we've indicated, we've preliminary identified that it would be, uh, uh, one, you know, one court, um, but there might be the opportunity to actually construct two courts, but we do need to look at that a little more closely, a little, a little more survey work to identify the exact area. I know, Mr. Howell, you've done some measurements out there, and that's what we have to take a look at. Um, to kind of accommodate the size, the area between the two courts, to make sure there's adequate room there with, with the oak trees, um, and, and the, uh, drainage areas, um, and improvements to trees and so forth that we have to kind of address. But, uh, both of those projects, uh, if one is City Park as well as at, uh, Ferber Park are, are in the works. Uh, if, if the direction was to look at a dedicated facility, you know, either basketball or pickleball, we could certainly do that. We were planning to accommodate via striping, uh, the ability to do both at that location. Um, at this time, we do have further plans for Vintage Meadows. Uh, though for the audience, we did, uh, our, thanks to the leadership of Hector Galvin, we did do some striping out there to accommodate, uh, pickleball to be able to be played on the surface, so that is, that is an opportunity, uh, for our, um, pickleball enthusiasts in Cloverdale. So, uh, Chair, this is just providing an overview of the work that we're doing, uh, our staff is doing in terms of trying to encourage the park recreation facility for our community, uh, and facilitate this conversation.
Is there any one more comment?
As far as the multi-use basketball and pickleball court, um, the, the real problem is nets. Um, we use our own portable nets. Uh, if you left them out there, they're going to get vandalized or stolen. Uh, I don't, I, I've never seen, uh, a permanent type net that can be removed and then installed and played. If that's the case, you're also going to need a place to store that net that's, that's secure. Because things, things will go away. In fact, this weekend, San Rosa, somebody poured soap on two courts along with some mixture in there that the city now has spent three days trying to wash off, because they, they didn't mark the courts. Does happen.
So, if I may, Chair, you know, I, we, we tend to, uh, not have enough amenities in our city, as we, as we talked about. We have young people that like to play sports, they play whether it's soccer, softball, basketball. A lot of young people that like to play on the playground and do that type stuff. We have seniors that like to do different activities. And I, I, I like the idea of sharing, but it doesn't really work when you only have one area and it's shared. So if it's occupied with some other activity, then the other activity can't be placed. I think we're at a point where we really need to look at dedicating for both basketball, dedicated for pickleball, dedicated to all these things, if at all possible. And I think we should maybe just take Brett's step back, take a look at all our parks, multiple plans. We do have some funding available, as the city manager pointed out. We also have funding that's, uh, maybe available through our impact fees, uh, set aside to make some improvements. So I'd like to kind of look at all that, and, and see if we can actually accommodate. Uh, Vintage Meadows is a good spot. It's underutilized in some parts of that park. And having a place where you can grow, maybe a court or two as it, as it grows, would be a nice amenity for our residents in the city. So I, I really do support taking a, a look at the bigger picture, so we can, by maybe put things in place that will accommodate a lot more people in our city. And I think it's important, and at the right time, we can bring our county folks to follow. When we talk dollars, because it is huge, we did that with the swimming pool, the projects, the county stepped up, and we shared that cost to, to keep that total vault between the city and the county, because a lot of county residents and their brotherhood use that pool. They recognize that. So I think that's a good argument. We may be able to get some assistance to that, from them, so.
I'm available to help in any way. After all, I am the best.
Brad, I have one more question. You know, I like the Vintage Meadows, and I like the, uh, the City Park because they have public restrooms.
Yes.
Uh, what do you do if you're going to use the high school, like you mentioned? How would you account? Would you put a court of money out there?
Well, we've played tennis out there as long as I've been here and never had baskets, just, you know. So.
Well, um, I think what I'd like to do, um, is, is to keep this on the agenda. Um, and maybe between now and our next meeting, we can put our heads together and, and, um, decide which one would be the best for the city to put together. So.
Just, just going back a few years, uh, actually, you and I served on an ad hoc, with the city council, that's where we worked on City Park. Just a little, we got the master plan developed, and I think it's time that we kind of take another look at all of that, and just kind of refresh it, and see where we're at, what some of the needs are, and what our ability is to maybe start by step-by-step implementing those things. So I would like to maybe ask if the city manager could facilitate a meeting just for this topic. And it would just be to, to review the master plan, which we haven't seen over three, four years, and to take a look at what's, uh, what potential funding might be available, and just take a look at it, with the purpose of looking at basketball courts as well as pickleball, some of the things that we're lacking, to, to, that are, there's strong desire to get, like, in, so.
Well, and, and just to make the hair on, on David's neck stand up a little bit. Mr. Cox, me and Delvin said, what about the airport? You know, I mean, that's a pretty big space we have down there, so, so, uh, we might want to get that around.
Well, I think we're senior citizens, and let everybody drive.
Well, yeah. Well, we'll come up with something. All right. Appreciate your time. Anything else before we move on to the next subject?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Next is the approval of the Minnesota Lake September 28 meeting. Councilmember Pollard, did you have a chance to look at that?
I did.
So why don't we go ahead and, uh, move forward. Um, so the minutes are, okay. Vanessa, I, I didn't get a chance to say welcome. I'm sure, uh, Mr. Kelly introduced you. Um, it's good to have you back on.
Good to be here. Thank you.
You're good, sir. Staff, is there any change to the order of the items under new items discussion?
Uh, Chair, the staff doesn't have any proposed changes, if you like, you, you decide your, uh, how you look at the items.
No, I'm fine with the way it is. I didn't know anybody else was on a clock. So why don't we talk about, uh, a, a water supply update, uh, in, in drought response?
Chair, the update's fairly brief. Uh, it, it's, it's really just an overview, uh, of the current situation with respect to Lake Minnetino, which is our, the primary reservoir that serves the Upper Russian River. Um, currently, the storage level of the lake, this is almost real time, is, um, 19,567 feet per feet. Uh, the target water supply level for this particular time of year, November 10th, um, which, which, which was, you know, last week, uh, is, is 54,877 feet per feet. So, um, just based on where, you know, historic modeling that goes back to the, the, um, Lake Minnetino, uh, the target water supply is, well, and, and of course, the reservoir was there then, but, uh, it's a ideal water level for, reservoir level for Lake Minnetino is just shy of 55,000 feet per feet. So we're, we're only 35.5% of its, uh, current target water supply, uh, than where we'd like to be at this particular time of the year. There, there, there are some developments that are also, uh, potentially impactful in terms of the Powder Valley Project. Uh, normally, there, the hydroelectric facility at Ben Arstel Dam doesn't permit transfer of water to generate hydroelectricity. Uh, but that, that facility is, um, under maintenance due to a failed, uh, electrical device in, uh, transformer, and, uh, P G N is unable to transfer that water, uh, to, to the, um, Russian River basin, and, and, and so we're, we're also seeing a reduced inflow that we normally have seen at this time of year, uh, based on P G N's generation of electricity. There, there is some interest in trying to see if they increase that water supply, but it calls into question a number of issues around water rights and, and also their ability to, uh, transfer water without generating electricity to that field transformer. So it, it, it suggests that, uh, Lake Minnetino may not fill to the level we might otherwise see it, because we're not receiving that input. Um, and really, the message is that, uh, despite, um, the fact that we've received really good precipitation in October, we're already off to kind of a dry start in November. Uh, I think for November, even at work, we're only, you know, halfway in, we're already kind of below average for the, for the month. Um, so it's a little bit discouraging, because we're, while we received a good amount of precipitation in the big storm at the South River, um, we're, we're not seeing a lot of the rain that we would like to see to really be able to pull it out in the drought. The, it's kind of the indication that we've been between five and seven storms that we received on October 27th in order to really get it back to normal. So, uh, at, at this point, we continue to be, uh, under the containment order, uh, issued by the State Water Board. Uh, we are submitting a monthly diversion report identifying both our production as well as our usage uh, and reporting in, in gallons per day, uh, for our residential uses in our overall uses for, for the city. Um, so, uh, we, we continue to support the need to continue the water source emergency and, and support continued conservation. Chair, that's, that's really the report at this particular point in time. Again, we kind of hope to, to, uh, to get, give this precipitation, you know, a little bit out of it, these drought conditions. But I think the last two years were so dry, it just, we put it at a low, that's what's the issue.
And it's not going away. We'll be back next year for the trail. Joe, I, I have a couple of questions, but if you want to, if you have anything?
Yeah, I, I don't.
You know, um, I don't know if this is appropriate time to start discussing it, but, you know, one of the things that we've talked about over the last couple of months, uh, with Hector in particular, was a, um, irrigation wells at our city parks. Um, Hector, I know he's not a, a, a geologist or can be able to say, but he seems to think that the water tables in certain areas of parks are really low, and it won't be much of an effort to drill down, tap into them, and use that for irrigation. Are we doing anything with that, or would you suggest we do, do that project?
You know, we, we have not taken steps to, to address that. We've certainly had, uh, internal discussions about uh, what opportunities there are to look at offsetting our fifth portable demand. Of course, our, our parks in our landscape are few, uh, you know, the city is one of the largest water supply users. The city is one of the largest water supply users or users of water for irrigation. So I think there is tremendous merit to the idea of looking at seeking irrigation wells to offset our potable water. And I think the first kind of step in doing that would be to do kind of our preliminary investigation, hiring the appropriate technical staff that can assist us with evaluating the possibility of putting in a well. Irrigation wells tend to be kind of come with a lot lower costs than if you're doing a potable well. And of course, you don't have all the infrastructure necessary to bring it to the treatment plant and do all that. So if, you know, I think with the recommendation of subcommittee, we can either agenda it or we could bring some alternatives, counsel to look at what are some immediate identifiable tools we can look at to supplant our potable water usage in our parks, including looking at trying some irrigation well that our parks' abilities to help offset or to use. Tremendous merit there.
Yeah, I think there is too. And just for the record, you know, people out there watching or to look at this later, the city does pay for it towards use. We do not give it free. So we also pay the water agency. That's a lot of money that we pay every month. Plus, it's a waste of good drinking water. With that being said, I think bringing it back to the full city council would be okay with me. The way I'd like to see it come back also is do a valuation of which is our biggest user, City Park, Ferber Park, Vintage Meadows, and that's the one we should probably zero in on first. Councilmember Pollak?
Yeah, I would like to also the school district in that review the best their use as well of fields. And we, obviously, the youth in our community use those fields for all the games as well. So I think they would be equally important to explore that.
And I think they do have a couple of wells already. The one behind Washington School, the solo panels, you see a water shed there. A water shed or whatever you want to call it. So I think that's using well water for irrigation.
For irrigation, yeah, I didn't know that.
But I think we are.
Yeah, we think we're just.
Why don't we open this up to the public? Anyone else have anything to say?
Just a quick question. Per my comments earlier, Rob, because I'll see, Bob Milkie had a suggestion a while ago about leveraging simple connections to Lake, nearby Lake Tenoma. Is there a way to use that as a backup resource for potable water to bring it into the city's water system?
I'm happy to entertain that question. I might have to, after I've continued here, you might have additional information. My understanding is that the city was approached when Lake Tenoma was constructed, whether we wanted to access the water for future growth and development. And then the time decision was not to pursue that. But that doesn't mean that this time you can't again, you know, inquire with the Tenoma County Water Agency, in Army Four, whether there's an opportunity to access that water. I just think, you know, maybe we can come with a cost that certainly provides an additional supply. So we can, we can check in and see if there's, there are, if there is some opportunities to access water within, within Lake Tenoma. But I do believe this largely had been allocated as part of the initial construction that the chair.
And then the other comments related to the federal funding with the first million that I touched on earlier. For those water supply projects, have you, since the money has to be allocated or committed to by 2024 for the first million and then 2025, I believe, for the next million that's coming in this summer, have you identified and started in some cases those projects to improve our water supply here in the city?
Chair?
Yeah.
So Kianko had a discussion regarding the allocation of the American Rescue Fund that has been earmarked to the city. First, we've received our first tranche, so roughly a million dollars. And of course, we hope we fully anticipate we'll receive the second tranche, you know, in June of twenty twenty-two. Kianko did indicate a very strong purpose for utilizing the American Rescue Fund for infrastructure to support our water system. I think there was generally a focus on two key capital group of projects, one of which was new meters throughout the city and then secondarily looking at, you know, maybe a larger kind of dam loan project, new chlorine contact gate, which is a critical item or possibly the replacement tank. So those are kind of three, I think, identified projects that were, there are three projects Kianko kind of spoke about, but that doesn't mean that we, you know, they can't reprioritize or allocate that to another project like construction of well. You know, and that, what we identified as a stretchable well is kind of a dam loan project, but it could be something we look at and think of in the context of adding the irrigation well is a way to help again offset our potable demand. So that's something we want to strategize with Kianko, with the subcommittee, you know, what's going to have the most benefit for the dollars we allocate towards either the plenty of water supply or adding to it in form of new water, what we call new water. So that's something we need to evaluate and discuss further. There's lots of pros and cons, but we have made progress on discussing the meter project. It's something we've actually started and we think are tremendous benefit to the community and to the residents and also to the utility for doing that ultimate way of water saving. There's, I think, the speaker of the lititude, there's somewhere between twelve, twenty percent unmetored water that identified through our tax reports and meters that tell that. And that will help us refine where that loss is, whether it's a loss or unmetored and helpful from a revenue perspective, but also help do a better job of conserving water. So we are, we are making progress on that and we think we're going to bring something for council consideration, probably early June, on that project. And we'll also, just today, we were looking at the feasibility study for the Cherry Creek replacement tank, which again is another project to watch.
Well, the other thing.
No, but I got, what I think a lot of the residents are interested in is seeing, have any of these projects actually started to see the construction regardless? I know there's a lot of construction going on down at the end of South Capitol Boulevard. I'm not sure if that's water main or sewer, but there's something going on.
P G N D.
Oh, P G N is doing.
P G N D is doing stuff.
But whether it was new water tanks or new water mains or sewer mains, that was considered one of the most critical infrastructure improvements. And we'd like to see, especially since the money is there, that done using the capital funds that came in from these different sources as opposed to the ratepayers funding it and we're not actually moving forward. That's sort of from a homeowner point of view and a residential point of view, we'd love to see those projects get started and done before the money disappears. Thank you.
So we'd love to see that too. Unfortunately, when you're dealing with the government agencies, there's a lot of i's and t's, i's and d's, please, of course, please, it's time. So, we'll see you in action. Okay, thank you. Anything else before we move on to the next?
Hi, it's Hector here. I just wanted to see if I can get the, just the opportunity to say a few words here regarding the irrigation and just the maintenance, just to make, just to, just to let you guys know, the council member Gus Walter and council member Joe Pollak, guys know the, you guys know the effort that we've been doing here in the Parks Department. I spoke to David and Kevin on this and I was thinking of sending a written report on ways that we are, I guess, I should say, getting ready or prepared for next season, depending on how, how much water, how much rain we get. What I've been doing with my staff, I've, I've taken, I guess, just the lead on evaluating every park, for example, City Park, and identified areas where we can save irrigation, water irrigation, in areas that really don't get utilized by the public and areas that we can, I guess, remove the irrigation and maybe add some, some nice mulch. So my goal, my goal with this is to evaluate Ferber Park, Vintage Meadows Park, City Park, and really every city-owned park in L and L districts, all seven L and L district, and see if I can reduce the water usage by twenty-five percent, which is my goal. We started, I know you guys are probably driven by the cottages district, that's where, where we all started and we're really, we're really going through and getting rid of all the dead vegetation and adding some mulch and, and, and see if we can really, really focus on, on some saving some irrigation because this summer was scary. And another example would be Vintage Meadows. There's a lot of little, little strip lawn areas and tree line between the curb and gutter. They really, we don't need any, any turf there. So those are areas that we can really go in there and turn off irrigation and really just do an overall evaluation of the irrigation system and save some water. And I really think we can, I mean, the numbers will speak for themselves. I really think we could make a significant difference.
Thank you, Hector.
Okay, why don't we move on to the next topic, which is review and discuss organization chart for the public works. This yours?
Yeah. This is an item I added to the agenda. And include it just for reference, include it in your packet, is both the existing org chart as well as a proposed organizational chart, just for reference.
Yeah. Thanks for one more, David. Of the organizational chart?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm going to hand out the, Yvonne, remind me, I'll send you a copy.
Okay.
Yeah, Yvonne, are you able to do a share screen on, on the org chart? I think it's the page with I five B two.
Okay.
Five B two, okay. Hold on a second. Go down quite a bit. Okay, hold on a second.
It's nineteen.
Okay.
Just for reference, Chair, I provided a copy of the org chart for the city of Tenoma as well as the city of Sebastian Paul. I'll just refer to those. I thought it might be helpful if we discussed the org chart to, you know, look at similar sized organizations. We can also talk about the city of Kattie. I think it's another similar sized organization. But currently, the, this department consists of really ten full-time positions and two, two part-time staff. So right now, we have a public works slash city engineer position. And then there are really what I would refer to as four, four divisions, water, wastewater, streets and facilities, and parks and recreation. And we really don't refer to it as recreation, we refer to it as parks and landscapes. And that's traditionally how we define our, our parks workers as parks landscapes in part because of their role of the landscape planning assessment district. So kind of four key divisions. But also embedded in that is there's quite a need for administrative support and how we address that is with the engineering tech or senior engineering tech position. We, with, with the resignation of our previous city engineer, public works director back in May, we now went through, you know, multiple recruitment process. We were unsuccessful our first round, so we kind of ramped up, tried to get broader distribution of job announcement flyer, getting it into more publications, getting it out to more websites now. And unfortunately, we, through those multiple efforts that now spanned almost five months, we only received one application. And that one application really didn't make the minimum qualifications for a position, didn't have that city engineer, professional engineer license associated with, with that. But then we did bring in to fulfill the city engineer role a consultant in the way of Vanessa Albedaca, who's joined us here, who previously served as our inner city engineer, now a firm of what's, you know, we filled that city engineer role with consultants. I think it's going to be very challenging for us moving forward to be able to fill that joint role of city engineer slash public works director. So we should start to think about, look at, how can we reorganize public works in a way that would accommodate, you know, that thinking that we're really probably going to need to rely on consulting out, contracting out our, kind of our city engineer services. We have a history of doing that. I think we, we fare well in that model. And there's a lot of cities that kind of follow, follow that, that same model with consulting out for what's critical in the area of service. So it comes to think about, with that said, what do we do with that public works director position? I think it's a key, a key, key decision. And likewise, and I think it's based on the kind of the discussion that we heard today regarding pickleball, I see this really tremendous interest in our community of focusing more and more on our parks and also how you might be able to deliver recreation services. So what I put together, that was kind of our preliminary thought for, for the public works subcommittee, is to look at reorganizing, reorganizing, reorganization of the public works department, wanting to move back to that kind of traditional role of a public works director. And I think this is where it's helpful, maybe to look at our reference sources. That can be a public works director, sometimes it's the, it's titled differently, it might be a public works superintendent. If, you know, if each city maybe has its own way, they might characterize that position, but put off, put off in its, its public works director. Likewise, we've seen over the last about three years timeframe, a kind of an evolution, an evolution with, with parks. It's taken a greater role in a lot of, I would think, let's call it, planning and development, working with our assistant city manager, community development director on new park improvements, planning in the way of grants, planning for new facilities and coordinating with, you know, cop estimates, doing some of the preliminary cop estimating and bidding work, but also as it relates to and tied into a new development review. Of course, we've got the bum burner project that came forward, there's a closely part of that and looking at that and coordinating that through the development process. So one consideration that I wanted to bring forward was the, the idea of bringing parks under, kind of under the guise of community development. My thought process with that would be to look at even rebranding parks, we call it community development, parks department. Then the parks, kind of bringing parks out from out of public works and elevating it into, you know, giving it some name as part of community development. Often you see in other cities, parks is referred to community services. And I think there's a tremendous need for, for some of those types of services. And I know our current parks need is. And I know our, our current parks lead is, uh, uh, is very in tune with, with our, our community needs. And I see him taking a more active role in working with our organizations, our residents. I'm trying to develop the parks program. I think there's a tremendous opportunity for that. Both looking at groups like the seniors center on building the park, working with, you know, organizations that wanna do pickleball. How can we facilitate this? And, and moving, making steps towards establishing more of that recreation department, but elevating parks and doing so. Um, and so that's, that's kind of the, the thinking or thought process behind maybe putting parks under community development. Uh, and, and doing so, looking at, you know, one position in particular, our parks lead, which we all know Hector. Uh, creating a, a park superintendent position that would move him from an hourly position to a temp. I think there's some cuffing that could be generated, uh, no longer after you get overtime and alcohol pay. Uh, but uh, you know, you, you become, you kind of that manager role. So it would represent an opportunity to um, create a new park superintendent with new roles. That also uh, come along with elevating parks within, within community development. So it's kind of a rebranding effort, community development parks. I just, I think we hear a lot of uh, uh, commentary in the community about parks department. Seems to kind of get us in that direction. Uh, and, and so that's kind of one of the, the thinking processes behind that. Um, but that, that leaves, so what that leaves in terms of public works is really your traditional water, wastewater, streets and facilities. You know, I, I wanted to take a second, a little bit to talk about both water and wastewater. You know, we, we tend to think of those kind of simple things. Um, but in, in, in larger cities, those are, each one of those is kind of broken out separately. So for instance, with water, you've got the water treatment plant, but then you have the water distribution system. So larger city, you often they'll have dedicated staff that can both, or, or do either, but not necessarily both. Which are kind of specialized in, in the same with water treatment, you'll have, or wastewater treatment. Is you have the, the wastewater staff, and then you'll have the distribution staff. And this is a book that will repair the sewer lines. Uh, the three line, uh, injected line, keeping them clean, keeping them flowing. So you get kind of almost like four divisions within those two, the two, four subdivisions within those two divisions. And, and within them, we really uh, have a fairly small staff, uh. Within water, we've got really two key operators. Uh, that's, you know, the name is Darren Trevor, uh, our utility worker. It is, uh, it's hobby error, he's truly a meter reader. Someone we need to work on getting certified and, and working on the distribution system. And, and, and wastewater, we've got to get two staffs. Uh, and then in streets, we've got. And, and when we call it streets, it's like, we really have three, three staff, uh, uh. Two utility worker twos and one utility worker one. So all in all, in those three divisions, we've, we've got. Four, five, six, nine staff members. And, you know, we're, we're very fortunate because. Both our water operators and, and both divisions have the certification to be able to work on the systems. So our wastewater operator certified in water operations, and our water operator certified in wastewater operations. They're, they both have the perfect certifications to be able to cross, uh, you know, work on those systems. And, and that's, that's, that's not traditional. Uh, so we're very fortunate in that regard that we have these staff that are very dedicated. It's kind of a note that, you know, for what we were asked to do, there's, there's a relatively small team of folks there. Uh, and, and, and parks, uh, I have to say, does play a critical role in filling some of those gaps. So uh, folks, Hector and his team often do fill in, and it's part of their job descriptions. Uh, we do ask, you know, require that they have uh, certification to work on the distribution systems. And, and it's an area where we can continue to develop that. So they're able to also assist. Really maybe not as lead, but assist in, in conducting some of the, you know, diversity repair for maintenance activities. So really what I wanted to do today is give the sub, subcommittee an overview of our organization. And our public works department proposed this concept of moving parks under community development with the idea of elevating park. This to be part of the name for that, that apartment. So there actually is called park, you know, parks department, community development parks. Uh, with the goal of kind of moving in the direction, uh, as we continue to grow and in the future be able to have a standalone. Parks department where we can have a parks director and it, it really lead up and develop park, you know, the recreation. Not just, not just maintenance. Uh, so that's kind of the vision, but you know, I'm here, I know there's some ideas. Uh, that may have, we have our acting, uh, city engineer, who money out, has some perspectives. Through the number of other jurisdictions that kind of sees how they accomplish things, how they do things, how they organize. Their workforce to accomplish the key goals of the city. And, and so that's, that's kind of what I, what, what I wanted to just at least present. Subcommittee is an idea, uh, on how we might look at reorganizing that, the public works, um, department. To kind of meet some of the future needs of our community.
Thank you. Um, any questions, Joe Thomas?
Just a couple of comments. First thing is, you know. We never, as long as I can recall, had a city engineer in-house in Cloverdale. The one that we had, the reason why, city traditionally did contract for that service. And I'm, even with it, our own city in, in-house city engineer, a lot of the work still had to be contracted out just because of work. So, you know, having the title with the time to do the job doesn't always force thought. Uh, I think it was a good, we happened to have, at that time had a qualified person who had the credentials. And that was the thought process to elevate that to city engineer slash public works director. But the reality is, a lot of the work still had to be contracted out. So I think this was a natural thing that we should seriously consider. I, I like the thought. I think it worked well before. I think it'll work well again. Uh, I had a question regarding moving parks or Hector's group over to, uh, the assistant city manager. Would there still be collaboration between the public works? Cause I know the public works staff does support them in Boeing services. Parks and, uh, oftentimes bringing trucks out to help load. I mean, with that, that would not change, would it?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great question, and that's actually something that we talked a lot about internally. Uh, before we even kind of formulated with the business of work with. Again, reflecting that we have a really small, tight-knit organization. Is, is the collaboration and the, um, working together still gonna exist? And I, I, I think the question, without question, the answer is yes, absolutely. I think it, it's, it's, it's critical. Uh, because, uh, our, 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 our parks lead and our parks meetings do fill a critical role. And on all rotation schedule. Uh, I, I think, you know, moving, if we were to move. Uh, which I certainly recommend moving Hector into a, a temp position. I think we could move him out of that rotation. It could be putting a lot of hours otherwise. I can still, still meet our needs. Uh, but, but happen to be available and fill in as needed on a critical, uh, you know, when there's critical needs and certainly. Certainly when we have the water main breaks, uh, or, or, and hopefully we don't have more of those, but when those thrive, it's kind of all hands on deck. Uh, but that, so that was, that's certainly the vision that kind of followed the lead. It, it would be critical that functionally, it, it still work out of the, uh, public works. You know, the corporation you are, still coordinating, uh, a number of activities around. Fifteen, fifteen leagues, addressing, you know, big projects and coordinating. Just as they do, just as much as they do, they do now. And, and I mean, I'm just really proud to say that, you know, someone like, like Hector, who's such a collaborative. Uh, uh, manager, you know, the better person to be able to kind of help to lead that up.
Now, Hector and his team do an fantastic job to the city, very, very fortunate. Uh, just two more quick things. Uh, one is, I, I really like what I heard about grants. Because I know there's gonna be an awful lot of money coming into the state. Uh, over a trillion dollar federal stimulus infrastructure bill was signed. And the state, I don't remember how many billions, but will be coming in. And I think we, we need to try our best to be as positioned as we can to submit. So we really need to have our staff really focused on the projects, as we talk about water, being a big one. Uh, and ready to submit and try to get our share of that money. Uh, it's gonna be very competitive, but I think, I think the objective is to get it throughout the state. And I think, uh, I just, just take it to the opportunity that we don't want to miss. The last thing, uh, on this chart, I was looking at it, we'd like to see a, a line showing for the contracts. Animal control and, and a line for the code enforcement, who that would report to under this organizational chart. And uh.
Well, I, I too like the layout, David, you've spoken about this, uh, situation before. Uh, and Joe, with the, with, with the money coming into the state, it's an opportune time for us to look at our, uh, master plan. You're really, uh, to have it ready and just submit it out of the way. Um, no, I, I can support this. Um, and, and like always, you know, David. You steer, steer the ship. So, uh, if this is something you want, I can't see any reason why the council wouldn't support.
Well, well, thank you, thank you, Judge Merewell, very charitable. I mean, you know, really, I, I, I tried to take the long view of, you know, what's gonna be. Beneficial for the state and how we can move to the future to really establishing parks and rest department. I think the discussion earlier today was a perfect example where we see there's this tremendous interest of utilizing those resources. And you, you need someone to kind of be able to lead that, lead that up. And I can't think of anybody better than someone like, like Hector, who. Uh, worked so well with the community that kind of, you, you put him in that leadership role. Uh, I, I really think it would be, um, a, a way to, uh. Unleash our, our, our tremendous asset to help, you know, foster and build community, uh, here in Cloverdale. Um, and, and you know, I think what we would do, kind of the next step in from that piece of it would be. Bringing forward a, a job description that, um, you know, provides for the key roles and the capabilities. But also that capability, working on, continuing to be able to work on the water or wastewater system, you know, as needed. And be a critical partner with our other public work staff. Uh, and then maybe through the budget, looking at how we can, you know, elevate the concept of parks within community development. I mean, there's, there's a lot of branding that kind of can go along with that. You often see that in other cities where the, the park staff. That are, that are orange shirts, they wear green shirts. And, you know, kind of gives them a different look, kind of different, uh, you know, different brand, if you will. Uh, and, and those are small things, but they have, have a lot of importance. But, uh, you know, the other aspect to this will be. And, and thank you, Captain Repal, for your, your, your thought process on the, on the public works director position. You know, is, is looking, uh, how we, how we might fill that role. Uh, you know, and, and, you know, is there, is there a staff member internally that might be able to, to lead up the water, wastewater, streets team? Um, you know, I, I, I think there is, but we can also, you know, re, re-recruit and see who's out there and, and, uh. Try to fill that position with all individuals. You know, it doesn't mean that we'll have to continue to, you know, on any way to get a contract to do, you know, provide those engineering support services. Uh, you, you know, it's just, I don't wanna miss it, that you, we're seeing a tremendous amount of, um. What I call regulatory requirements, uh, from our agencies. That we, you know, are largely our state agency, but, but also even the county on, uh. Uh, our, uh, kind of the permitting and reporting requirements with storm drainage. Uh, with water usage, with wastewater reporting. Uh, it, 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 it does identify, there's a tremendous need for that, that, that existence on the interstate side. Uh, and then just first the approach for permitting to develop, to kind of parsing that out and looking at how we can. He had the combination of internal staff and. The regulatory environment doesn't seem to be giving any, any easier or, or less paperwork. It's only going in one direction. Uh, and it's, that's just the challenging area that we're happy to see for, I call compliance. And just the development review engineering, we're still going through post ones. And they've got a really good development engineer, rights, our conditions of approval. That all gets tacked on to what we get cost recovery from the development projects. So that's one aspect of our development, uh, engineering that's kind of aligned and looking pretty well. And, and I wanna give accolades to, to Hector. Um, he, he's been very active and participating in the mayor and parks oversight committee. He's been responsible for, uh, uh, meeting with that, that, um, which is appointed by the board supervisors. Appointing with, meeting with that oversight committee, uh, providing presentations on. How we are as a city utilizing those funds, uh, and, uh, you know, giving your kind of report outs. And, and Hector's really taking that on, uh, as, as the leader to, uh, provide those updates. And, uh, he's gotten a lot of, um, positive reports back from, from the, uh, you know, these, these are tac talks. Uh, that are looking at some plans that he's, uh, done a great job at navigating the oversight fees, the funds as well.
Is that, uh, I know at one point, I think we had discussed whether that measure M money was bondable. If we could bond against it so that we can get a big chunk as opposed to what we get now at a hundred thousand.
Probably a hundred thousand, a little, a little bit more.
If we could bond against it for ten years and get a million dollars and just get some stuff done. Uh, and of course, the source of repayment would be our annual.
That would be a legal question we could ask those days. Maybe, I think we should get an opinion on that. I think that's a good idea. To at least know if that's doable, because as we look at these major projects. Uh, it'd take ten years to save enough to try to do one. And it'd be nice to be able to make things happen and have that money paid out.
And, you know, one thought, you know, uh, Jerry mentioned that, uh, that the city park, I think absolutely we should, we should look at that. Just to plan to see, we, we may want to think about, uh, a, a city wide park management plan. Really, you know, not, not to, 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 to go through the same process like you did with city park and revisit, re-envision the park. But to, to kind of identify what are all the resources out there, you know, how many that work. And so, and look at it in terms of our demographic, our population. And, and that can be, it, it doesn't have to be super expensive. But it could be a way that we have all that data in one spot and information, and it just helps to get a form of just making. That's just, I just want to highlight that theme, that that would be something to give it more of a city wide, city wide park management plan rather than, you know, focus kind of. Plan that we did for the city park.
Well, I think the key is, you know, you, you said that it's not spent a lot of money. Cause a lot of times we see these reports and they sit on the shelves and, and then it's time to do something we just don't want.
Like I said, I, I, I'd like to see us have a meeting to discuss just the parks. Uh, and, and I also know we have impact fundies, uh, eight hundred thousand plus. And I think some of this money should be spent to upgrade some of these, uh, services that we, we definitely have a need for. So I think we do have at least a little bit of money to make some things happen fairly good. I just have one more question on this before we leave this. Uh, is this, this would be probably a legal question. I think I know the answer. Is this being preferred for this process or do you need it?
Well, I, I.
I don't think it is, but.
If, if we, if we create a, a new park superintendent position, I, I, I would anticipate, expect that that would be within the. It'd be a new position that we probably put, I recommend putting replacing in the, uh, unaffiliated M O U. Right now, that affiliate group is kind of a mix of, uh, mid, mid managers. We don't really have a, a M O U or a mid manager group, or, you know, over time, but I think that's, if the. Cities are gonna start to grow and that's an area where probably you're gonna need to be, you know, some. That's where the growth occurs, I mean, it's a top of the plot per se, you know, a little bit in the middle. And, and that would be, could be a new position that we added, we could add to, uh, unaffiliated and, and. That would require me to just know that nine employee group. My, my recommendation would be if we, if we make that change to keep that parks and recs lead position within the classified M L U. Leave it vacant until there's a qualified applicant, you know, much like our current incumbent. You know, that has, he's got a, you know, sort of C R B. Completed a number of professional certifications, uh, in, in preparation to become that, that role, that position. And it creates a path for another person potentially further into that, you know, downward.
Okay, is there any members with their hands raised up in virtual world?
If, if I may, it's Hector, he might just say a few words, that's okay. Uh, first of all, I want to, I want to thank, uh, thank, uh, thank David for doing all that, putting all that presentation together, all that work. I know, I know it takes, it took a lot of time and, and effort from not just him, but from Kevin and, and Shannon and everyone. Um, but I, I agree with David, you know, as far as, you know, with the growing demand for, for a dedicated parks and recs department. And new development, you know, we could tackle some of the projects like the, the open space vegetation. Uh, vegetation management plan out there, which I've been, uh, involved with right now. Uh, you know, other projects like per capita projects. And, 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 and other, other daily residential, I guess, inquiries. As far as arboring goes, as a city, as the only city arborist, uh, dealing with those daily, you know, city arborist demands, uh, can take, you know, quite a little bit of time. Uh, and while, you know, I'm working under the community development, uh, director, you know, we can still tackle all the parks activities. Uh, that we currently have now. And just to answer the question about cooperating with other, other departments, right now as we speak. Two of my park guys are helping out, uh, the streets department, uh, repairing that main break up in, uh, Hillview. Uh, and so we would continue to do that, uh, to help each other out. We're too, we're too much of a, we're too small here not to. Uh, we all know each other here and we, we all become, I guess, as a unit, when we have main breaks or, you know, floods or anything, we all become, we all work together and get it done. Uh, so I just wanted to say those, those few things, uh, right there.
Yeah, thank you, Hector.
Yeah, and Hector, thank you for those comments. And my, my concern was not the current employees we have, but as time goes by and people come in and job description. I've seen where they, it's none of my jobs, none of my jobs. Yeah, and that's what I want to guard against. So, you know, it, I want to make sure that as managers, you have the ability to say, yes, you need to do this, you need to do that. We are a team. And that, that was the only purpose of my concern because we are small.
Thank you, thank you, Hector.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on to the next topic, which is, um, a discussion of options for restroom in Cloverdale. And Kevin, this is yours, so David.
Well, the chair, I think it's gonna be all, all stars and a little turnover. Uh, both, both Kevin and, and Hector did, uh, prepare quite a bit of information, uh, for this agenda. Um, I'll just kind of frame it up. This, this, you know, council previously just discussed the, the concept of installing a Portland Lou, uh, which is a brand name. Uh, facility, restroom facility, kind of hard facility, if you will, for, for our, our plaza. Uh, and we, we did include in our budget to use the Quimby Act funds, uh, to amount of a hundred seventy-five thousand. Uh, that would cover not only the purchase of the, the Lou itself, um, which, which is about a hundred and five thousand plus or minus tax. Um, uh, and then, then there's the cost of connecting to the, the, the sewer main, which runs, uh, almost the city center through the plaza. So additional underground improvement work to accommodate the, the sewer connection, but luckily water's pretty close by. Uh, we, we did hear from the subcommittee that there's interest in, you know, alternative restroom facilities. Uh, maybe something that has more traditional design similar to what we see at, uh, you know, either Furbur Park. Uh, uh, or, or even, you know, Vintage Meadows. Again, still using durable materials, so concrete block, the feed resistant type material. Um, but our, we, we kind of focused on where the Portland Lou, um, was really, uh, a, a, a one-person facility. Was, was looking at some models that would have, um, would have two restrooms associated with it. Uh, and what we've done is we've provided models, uh, one that's the Romtech model. I think that's what we have at Furbur Plaza. And we've also included in the package some, uh, drawings of, uh, two different models from the rest, the public restroom company. Pretty, pretty similar. Um, uh, those are just, again, just design iterations. There's, as, as we, we engage in conversations with, um, these differences that provide these, there's a myriad of architectural styles and, and things that you can, you know, add or look at to these facilities. Uh, you know, whether you have a sink that's inside or a sink that's outside or a water fountain outside. Uh, you know, what, what you, what kind of, you have a steel roof or a, or a shingle roof. Um, you know, there's all these different elements. Uh, the drawings don't, don't do justice in terms of the color scheme. Again, attractive color schemes to make it look more, um, more natural to, you know, unpainted wood material to kind of fit the thought of the arborist. But, uh.
Any idea of the cost figure?
Well, the, um, the, the, the cost range, I think for the, the dual facility, um, not including the, uh, sewer connection or the water sewer main, uh, between a hundred and fifty and a two hundred twenty-five thousand. A key difference again, these are dual facilities, so there's two restrooms. Where Portland Lou is just a one, one-person, you know, unisex. Uh, and of course, you know, these, these multi, uh, you know, facilities, they can be unisex as well. Or you could have them be, you know, dedicated one male and female. Uh, it's just really kind of, but it's a decision.
Well, I'm sorry, we, we don't respect.
Well, I wanted to, you know, let Kevin and Hector, you know, they, they, they wanted to add, uh, uh, to, you know, to the conversation regarding what's included in that impact.
I mean, that covers it. I do think he estimated that one fifty to two fifty.
Oh, one fifty-two.
Uh, age fifteen, one. These are pretty informal quotes because they don't have a sign or anything, but.
Well, that's, that's a pretty drop. No, I don't think it is a drop. It's a, it's like a chin.
Hector, do you know what it, how it's filled or is it not fixed at all?
Well, the, the public restroom companies, there's two, there's two models in there.
Yeah.
Yes, twenty-one and twenty-two, those are free bath, kind of dropped in. Uh, whereas I think the Romtech model, Hector, that one, you, I know you have direct experience with.
Yeah. So we had the, so I, we got ahold of, uh, Travis Alson, who was a, a representative from Romtech. Uh, he, uh, he was the one that was, uh, designed and built the current restrooms that we have at Vintage Meadows. Uh, which is a dual, it's a dual, uh, restrooms in that, uh, personally, I've, you know, I've maintained those restrooms now for about thirteen years. And, uh, they are bulletproof. Um, something like that would be ideal for the downtown. Uh, there's not a lot of maintenance, uh, to the restrooms. Uh, you're, from a maintenance point of view, you typically just grab a water hose and hose everything down. There's nothing you can hurt, there's no sheet rock, there's no, it's all concrete. It's got, uh, stainless steel, uh, utilities and toilets and, and sinks. Uh, so Travis, uh, mentioned that the base model will start, which will be exactly like we have now at, at Vintage Meadows. It, it starts off at a hundred and fifty thousand. And it was not, of course, that's just a rough estimate. And then, uh, from there, we would have to, you know, include, uh, the hookups, uh, the utility hookup such as power that we have nearby. And water and sewer. Uh, and he, looking at his email, looking at his email right now. He, uh, he said that if we were interested on, on moving forward, he would, uh, meet with us, maybe arrange a meeting with us and, and meet on site. And kind of go over the project.
Hector, the ones in Vintage Meadows, are they unisex or are they specific?
They're not unisex right now.
Oh, yeah, we love to change that.
Oh, yeah, we can do that. I just, it's just a matter of putting, uh, just adding some different, different signage. Uh, but right now there's, there's, uh, just a dual for men and, and women.
Well, yeah, and the same at Furbur Park, I think.
Yes, the Furbur Park does, you know, it's a little, the design over there is, is a little bit different. Uh, the, the, the restrooms are actually included with, uh, snack shack.
Right.
There, so that's, uh, the layout is a little bit different there. But, uh, you know, Vintage Meadows, those, those guys are, as far as for, you know, maintenance and durability. And they actually look pretty nice, pretty attractive looking.
Well, I, you know, I, 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 I push for the Portland Lou. And, and I'll tell you, the reason I do, uh, is because it's just as easy to clean. You can configure the bottom to hide people's feet or whatever you want to do. But the, the selling point for me is it's portable. You can pick it up and move it somewhere else. If we ever redesign that plaza, it's not like you have to take down the building and be constructed somewhere else. I just, I just think it's more flexible. Um, so, well, why don't we open it up and, and try and give staff some direction? Congressman Walter?
Well, thank you, uh, Congressman Walter. I, you know, I, I understand, you know, your comments, I, I, I really do. I, but I, I really think I like the other design much better. I'm not crazy about the Portland Lou. I, I see I have an article here in the press Democrat that stated, uh, nine, one, twenty-one. Where City of Santa Rosa says, uh, they, they spent, the restroom itself, it costs two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the cost included transportation, installation, utility, hookup and accessibility improvements. And it took one stall. And that's a lot of money. It's not what I call attractive. I don't feel it's going to supplement our closet at all. The way we have Friday Night Live and the number of people and how they filter throughout that whole area. It's very, where that's located, again, we'd have to look at where exactly we could go. But the original plan I saw, it's kind of like right in the harbor, it's surrounded by people. And you put this thing there that's partially open. And it's not a very inviting environment for somebody to go in to use the restroom. So I, I would like to see it more traditional. I'd like the one that Vintage Meadows, I think it serves well. Hector articulated quite well, it's held up well, it cleans up easy. It's, it's just, it's just a good fit and you have two restrooms. At lesser cost than at least this Portland Lou cost.
I, I have to agree with you, you know, we probably get more bang for our buck at the one fifty, two hundred thousand dollar range. And we just live the one. Um, you know, the location where we picked, I think it's perfect behind the stage where the modular used to be. I, I think that's an ideal location. Um, I mean, I could go with either one, I just want to get something.
I do too. I really as a fourth, moving in the other direction, I, I really do. I really have hesitation on Portland Lou. I've seen them, I'm not, I'm not a fan of them.
Well, I, I can go with, I could swing either way on that, you know. The, the thing that you brought up, and it's really going to be, I think it would become an issue at some point is on Friday Night Live. I mean, traditionally, we shut down public restaurants and they have to bring in their own. I mean, there's going to be people that are going to want to use that facility. So we might have to revisit that policy that we have.
Yeah, for Friday Night Live, I think we're still going to have to bring in one. These two are accommodate, you know, thousands of people. Yeah.
So David, can you make that recommendation, bring it back to the city council?
Uh, a- a- absolutely, um, you know, council, uh, supported the Portland Lou. So we need to, you know, frame it that, you know, kind of reconsider the previous decision and, and look at, uh, probably augmenting the budget to accommodate, you know, I think, I think the, the dual unit is, uh, probably a, a little more costly. Uh, but you're getting two versus one, so the kind of per unit cost is lower. Uh, so, uh, and, and we do have, we, we did allocate, um, Quimby Fund.
Would you also reduce those on ten percent?
We're still about more there.
Oh, okay. We, we, we do have, uh, parks and recs fee, parks and recs impact fee. And I think our, our estimated fund balance is around a hundred thousand dollars. So maybe rather than augmenting with, you know, using all of the Quimby Act fee. Uh, or, I mean, we could, we could either propose using additional Quimby Act or utilizing some of the parks and recs fee. It may be, I think it's, it qualifies for Quimby and sometimes using it for that purpose. So that you got a dedicated one-fourth fund. Uh, I think, I think we would have enough to accommodate the, um, the, the public restroom. So just be a budget adjustment.
I, I, I know we're short staffed, um, and, and we're missing some key positions. But I'd really like to see it come back as one final. Here's what we're recommending, here's the cost and let's go ahead and do it, yes or no? As opposed to presenting it and coming back with the cost and all. If we could just bring it to the full city council with the bulk, yeah, with one thing up, thumbs up.
And sort of wrote up the, the, uh, we edited here and this is what we're recommending and this is, you know.
Again, I, I.
The model, yeah, is the model at, uh, Vintage, Vintage Meadows, does that you think that's the kind of the design concept that we want to recommend here?
You know, uh, as far as I'm concerned, Hector and Kevin can make that decision. You know what we want, we want it to blend with the plaza to just do something.
And we may bulletproof like Hector mentioned. And I think the staff report, I'd really like to see it articulated like that. That it does, uh, if this, at least maybe not the design, but the, uh, the materials, uh, weather for thirteen years. Like, uh, the Vintage Meadows and that this has held up exceptionally well. And we should make that look there.
And, and of course, I'm sure we're going to have to include it with some new amenities like a, a, a baby station in it. I mean, the, the one in, uh, Vintage Meadows, Jesus, Dan's in that, it's so big.
Yeah, some of, some of the, I think they all have to come with, uh, they call changing stations inside now, uh, and, and the side. Because they're, they have to be ADA accessible. Uh, some of the flexibility is whether you lose, you put the service door on the back or you put a, yeah, some, some, the wash basin on the outside. There, there, you're trying to alleviate certain issues, you know?
It's funny you say that. I went to Sweet Peas, uh, down in Winter for dinner after the, uh, Louis Burbank performance a couple of weeks ago. In that bathroom, you walk in and it's just like a bunch of doors and it's unisex.
Right.
I mean, I went in my bathroom, there was a girl that wondered what next to me. You come out and the hand washing station is outside. It was just so well thought out, you know, it was just so practical. You get away, you get away from the gender issue of one AM or two P, you know, and which one AM I have to use. It's just unisex.
I think unisex seems to make sense.
Yeah, but I like the idea of the hand washing outside because there's times I just want to wash my hands, you know? And I don't have to go in the stall. If it's outside, I can wash my hands after I get done eating my hamburger and then move on, you know? So I, I like the outside feature, even if there was one inside, you can have a couple of outsides as well, would make sense.
So, and, and again, I don't think this, when it's all laid out, it's going to be more expensive than before. I don't, I mean, but we'll see. I mean, since I was based on the article, uh, from Santa Rosa, you know, they paid like, let's say, two hundred sixty thousand for one downtown. So that's quite.
It might have been there, um, how long they, they had to bring in the sewer water line.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that was fully installed, it's trapped, yeah. But still the numbers are there. So I think I agree with Congressman Walter, we could just bring it back as a, I, I think as an action artist. Unless they direct, otherwise it should. Unless they direct, otherwise it should be, uh, I wouldn't put it under consent. I'd put it under uh new business. And we will hopefully move it forward. So I think every council member, we've had this conversation over. At meetings, we need to get some restroom facilities.
Yeah, I thi- I think ideally, if we were able to make this turnkey as possible, uh, you know, we, we. We, we move quickly, if we were able to do that, you know, it's.
That would be good. That would be relevant.
Okay, if there's no hands out there, um, in Zoom, okay.
I just wanted to make sure too, the location and the people indicate this is going to work. The security, I know that we saw our security cameras out there, that, that this would be monitored and, and that. Because I think that's important.
Our, our plan is.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that we'd make sure that there's, this is monitored for the outside as well. And there'd be lots unlocked like the rest of the others.
Okay, well, why don't we move, turn our attention to the traffic signal down on the south side panel?
All right, well, what is, in, well, it, council uh. Did uh approve a, a notice of completion for the project that involved the uh installation of the signal. I think the, the consultant, uh, St. Francis Electric, uh, did complete the scope of work that it was originally bid. Uh, there were, there were some, some modifications that were made during the project, just for striking and. And, and, and some of the uh detectors that we felt were important. Uh, but nonetheless, that, that project was considered complete. We did do some uh optimization. On the same note to try to address uh what were some of the um concerns about their operation. Uh, one of the, I think, remaining issues that we see is that uh. Cars, vehicles or vehicular movements that uh are trying to make less, less turns either northbound or southbound. Uh, have to wait for the full uh phasing of the signal before, you know, if they miss the, miss the turn on their signal. What a number of cities now are doing is uh implementing what they call flashing yellow arrow operations. Or, or I like to call it yield on, yield on yellow, uh, which is so long as uh traffic, there's no incoming traffic. You can, you can make that, you can make that left-hand turn. So that would be making a left-hand turn of. The, the boulevard uh onto Treadway if you're heading north. Or uh if you're heading south, uh, make a left-hand turn onto, onto the Manhattan. Uh, there, there is some uh modifications, particularly programming that would be required. What we, what we've asked with the proposal from W Trans to design the uh, the, those modifications and. Uh, including your package proposal to do the design modifications. We, we do have a, a, a contractor that we work with that does most of our streetlight modifications. Uh, that, it would be, the, the actual work that i- itself would be performed. Uh, we state by, by existing city contractor. Uh, that, that work is not switched out here, but. Uh, primarily we need to undertake the necessary design work to do that. In, included on our page, it's fifty-two and fifty-three, your package proposal from W Trans. To uh design the, uh, the base plan to accommodate the yield on yellow. Uh, which would, would, you know, are flashing yellow arrow operations. Um, to, to support the, the turning movements and help alleviate some of that, some of that waiting that occurs currently. So that's uh, we want to bring that back for, for folks that need to review consideration.
So, okay, go ahead. What was the price? Being five hundred, yeah. That was to do all the water, or is that?
That's to do, uh, the, it, it's, it's, it's really, a lot of it is on signal programming. And we would still uh utilize our, our contractor to actually perform the, the changes. Uh, but it, you know, I guess it wouldn't have really a scope uh for that until after the design. I mean, I can give you that as a rough estimate. Uh, my previous discussion with David Chen is that. That that's not a significant scope or particularly making sure that the, um, the timing sheets and it, it, it's all. Uh, done correctly and phasing for how those lights signals are going to, going to work and then. Uh, you're making sure that there's technical aspects are, are done properly.
So, you know, that is one of the areas where there's complaints from residents. It's that intersection and the way that cars have to stop and back up. And I myself have experienced it often, I'm not sure what in the room does where you, you stop. If you're going northbound, you stop at Treadway there to make a turn. It's not hard to see. But you're stopped waiting and another car behind you, another car behind you. And it goes through the recycle and then, then, thank you, but before you can make it, all the cars have to stop. Because now there's a bunch of cars and it seems like we're just, we really need to keep the traffic moving there. And I think this is a critical component that will make a huge improvement by allowing motorists. Santa Rosa has implemented those throughout the city and it really works well. It tells you if you're on yield, but you can go when it's safe and the cars are moving. So I can really support moving this problem. I think it needs to happen. I think the community wants to see this fixed and not satisfied with waiting. I hear that.
And, and um, David, what, what do we have left in that fund for traffic, like signalization? Or will this be a complete hit on the general fund? Cause I, 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 you know, I'm, I'm thinking, just picking a number out of the air. I can't imagine that being more than twenty grand.
You can, I don't know that the Kentucky cops and that, that would be part of it. Server impact fee, it looks like we had, had made a fund out around three hundred thousand. It started this, this year, I'm seeing it, supposed to expand, so.
Uh, so we've done money.
We did use, uh, we did use impact fees to fund a portion of the project.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. And you know, as far as I'm concerned, this is a, this is going to be a moving problem. I mean, we've got six hundred cars that are competing in that area. Once that bottom line property is developed, then we may have. Mr. Cox, you have a question?
Yes, uh, I just want, uh, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn or saying anything that, that is obvious. And that we just put those signals in, correct? And we declared them, the private finished, and all of a sudden you're going to spend twenty grand or whatever it is, or eighty-five hundred. What, whatever the number is, to do a study or to put the, the flashing yellow in. And shouldn't that have been part of, this is the, the public out price, it'll be that, you would spend more money on it. Uh, shouldn't have been, have all been part of the same project of where that would have been the completion. Finalize the, the obvious correction of whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Finalization. You know that out price, okay.
And just, just a quick comment, uh, you know, you have the nail on the head. As a resident, it upsets me the way this turned out. Uh, you know, when the traffic engineers come in and give that beautiful presentation that tell you always it's going to work. It sounds like it's going to be flawless.
Yeah.
And you depend on the experts. Unfortunately, it's not flawless. And it's uh, it's kind of a mess. And I think it's improved considerably with the modifications. And I commend the firm that came in after we, we met with them uh by Zoom. We shared our concerns. They went out and they did do some significant improvements. But this would even add more than it's written. Unfortunately, I guess because of the program. Had, I, I'm just, I'm under the mindset, this cost would have been built into the original bid, had we expected.
My, my thinking is before you sign off on it, you get this correction made and then things decide.
Well, we, we didn't know, we didn't know and, and for the next signalization, maybe we, we say thirty-day trial period, or forty-five days to work out the bugs. But a council member Paul is absolutely right. That eighty-five hundred we've been throwing in the fees and we'd still be paying for those who were flashing yellow. It is what it is and it would, you know, I, 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 I think we should be committed because we're not willing to stay.
That's right. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You're not staying.
It's not working, we don't appreciate that.
And is, is it the, uh, yield on yellow, uh, I mean, some areas it's been around for a while, but it, it, it's, it's. Something that as we've become more mindful about, you know, how much we're idling cars, you know, it's. It, it, and, and. Realistically focused, have, you know, we're more time constrained, uh, you know, we, we hold away this signal. Uh, you know, these things have grown in, in interest and so I think just even since this, 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 there's been this evolution, right? And, and now they're more, they've proven they're more safe, uh, or that they, 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 you know, there's a safe feature to add. So, you know, I think, you know, apartment is just a tiny between one of the designs and will deliver the project. You're, you're, you're still seeing, there's still a lot of intersection that you're being, being able to miss, yeah. But it's, it's evolving.
The quicker way you get people through an intersection, the less greenhouse gases you have. You sit there and it's not like.
You just want to do, you just want to make sure that it, they, they work and there's, I mean, besides working, they're safe. There, there is opportunity to, definitely to be moving uh through, through the death phase now. And, and so that's helpful for our driver to be, to be mindful of.
So what's the timeline for where you're going to speak forward?
Well, I think, I think, uh, I'll, I'll have to look at our budget. If, if it doesn't, I think it's a part of the budget amendment. Uh, if, if it does, then we will, 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 uh, put it on fairly quickly. We'll see if we can make it for the next meeting in December. Uh, if, if, if it does, then it's within my, my authority to determine if it's going to go, but that, uh, we need to.
All right, if there's no questions out there in the audience, we're going to move to uh, okay. Uh, next is uh potential uh options for a dog park in both of the areas. Kevin, is this you?
Sure, I'll take this one. Could they get a break? Uh, this is all combined on the planning and sustainability subcommittee. We've had two meetings regarding this topic. Uh, what are included in here is uh the sites that we came up with. There's actually stuff that you may have not seen before. And also number Walter, that uh, um, and I'll just keep it kind of updated, what we did last, the last time the committee was. We reviewed all of these and we kind of each person, each person, but some people got some tap to kind of follow up on each one of these. Uh, to look on page fifty-six. Kind of a new one that we hadn't really thought of before, but it's on the smart property on Oxy Road. And it kind of uh goes south there from the facility. I don't know if you guys are on that page and I can see it. And council member Bagby was going to follow up on this one, see what the appetite was there for, um. For that. Second one is the one that you and I only visited, comes on Walter, uh, just the old Landville site. I was tasked with following up on that. There was some discussion by some of the new audience that there's a class. That's coming up from the ground.
This is all done?
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know, you know, I need to, for my next finding of community, I'm just to. Look into that, see if that's for real, see if that's an issue or can be resolved.
But, oh, did you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Well, did you class them like this is the, I thi- I think we should pick, okay, this is where we want. Now there's a piece of criteria. Okay, so let's move on to the second choice. Did we do it that way or are we just venting them all now?
Well, I think we eliminated a couple. Um, and we left Walter standing with more hall of work to be done by. Uh, Malia and the, and Rafael. Um, so if you go on to the next one, it's the, it's the Caltrans one. I think we kind of dismissed this one at this point, just given that the Caltrans is the fault of the earth and the lack of parking. Yeah, and then we, we sort of worked at all the existing parks, which, you know, the, we could. Potentially do a number of small ones or we can try to go with one big one. Um, but this one is, I think, still in the running. This one, the next one on page uh fifty-one was one that Rafael came up with, which is the Polly Class. Memorial Place, you know, I, I know. Um, and he's actually, this was the one that he's following up on. He did get some interaction with them, a semi-positive. Um, it's um, pedal, protein, pedal, pedal and protein.
Really?
Yeah, and they're, they're not interested in ever developing, if they want to. The idea here would be, could this be a memorial slash dog park and partner with you to, to, to do uh. A kind of memorial.
Do they want to do a memorial?
Well.
They don't, oh, yeah, they don't want that, yeah.
Years ago, the father said, that's not where we want to be remembered.
So, but anyway, I didn't know that. Um, but they did seem, they didn't dismiss it out of hand and they seemed kind of interested. Rafael's, um, working on that one.
That would be ideal.
It's pretty doable. I mean, I never, never thought of that.
Yeah.
I, I think that uh, you know, the triage is down there as well, you know, maybe they could be. App to assist and maybe it can be a nice remedy for them as well. So that one is in the running. Um, yeah, and then uh on page sixty-two. Dogs, this is when you and I went and looked back.
Yes.
Which, you know, has some downtime being in the L and L in proximity to the neighbors. So the three I believe that are still, are, have risen up are the, is the Polly Class. Um. The um, still the dump, the dump site, which I'm looking into and then possibly the smart, the smart site. It's kind of like a strip of land and it's not really being used.
Well, well, that was smart. I mean, I guess it, I got an email from you.
Yeah.
Is that published?
Yeah, it, it, I, I, I think it's fair to say that the county is interested in utilizing the. The, the, the existing office, the, 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 the trade station.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for provision kind of service.
Yeah, and, and uh, the terrain on that piece though, I don't think it's conducive to walking. I mean, it would have to be graded somehow, if I'm not mistaken.
I think the thought was the parking there, you know, it would require the one and smart to read all of this, but. You know, I, I think it's worth investigating and again, how smart Bagby was, was kind of looking for this one for connection, so.
Well, I'm excited about the Polly Class site. Joe, what do you think?
That'd be a good one.
I mean, God, that Kelly Road, um. I mean, the, the winery, I'm trying to think, the wine storage is right next to it?
It's, you know, I know if, if there's something.
Oh, is it? Okay.
You have one on your camera. I'm not sure.
Yeah. But I'm sure that would be pretty exciting.
So I don't know, if, we can keep this as an item on this, uh. A lot of the work is being done, I think we can support back to, or if you like the way we're going with this or if you have a different idea.
Joe?
No, I, I think it's a great idea. I do think it's important not to put them button up to homes, you know? I, I was looking at a couple of them, like you mentioned, Vintage Meadows and the Ferber, it was right, right in their backyard. And, you know, dogs, you know, God love them. They like to play and bark and have a good time. And, and I don't think neighbors want to sit in their yard and have entertainment.
Well, well, plus now, you know, with potential pickleball sites.
Yeah.
On both of those parks, I'm sure, you know, those are pretty much chewed up. Same with City Park, I mean.
And then I, I, it may not be, uh, to satisfy the entire city, but that is the proposal, it's part of the landmark.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not big on that. I, I gotta be on this. I mean, you buy a new house and all of a sudden the whole town comes with this, or, you know, granted, you know, after a couple of weeks.
Or there's already, already small.
But, um, well, I thought.
I think this is.
Then you could do a couple of the. And um, see, this, what are they, just land banking?
You can do all, kind of a good design, you know, that's been down in this area forever, so, um. So, um, they're trying to handle it, I'm really interested in any of that. So I, I don't know.
Maybe they would get together, don't need it, you know, and with, with their name as a memorial, whatever.
Yeah, that was the idea.
Partnership instead of acquiring.
Yeah. And I still think the city owned, asked the property should be, you know, looked at. I, I understand the class, but what would it take? Because we're not building on it, what would it take to, because that's sitting there, three and a half acres. And it may be worth some investment to be a dog park plus, maybe that other inches. As we talked about, need, you know, pickleball locations, a different thing in the future. So that may be very well a place that you could actually grow senior activities and sports and.
Yeah. Have you walked it, Joe?
I have not. I, I've been by it, but I have not.
Kevin and I walked it.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a nice layout. I mean, it's, there are some trees.
It's gonna need to work, there's no doubt, but it's, but it, once the work's done, we have some future benefits to the city, but it's, it's there now, it's, it's just nothing. And, uh, I still think we should look at moving the annexed property, get it out of the county, I said that all along. Uh, I know they don't typically don't want to do islands, but if it's city owned, typically that's an exception. So, and this is, and the, it bothers me to retain some taxes on this property that's over the city.
Okay, so.
I'll just work back.
Yeah. Are you okay with that, Joe?
Yes, I would like to keep all those.
But if they want, if they want my opinion, I'd like the, uh, I'd use Polly Class as a, as a name for it. The Polly Class in the, um, the city owned, ask the property.
That's my two faves. I, I think the fire as well. So I'm still optimistic, those would be. And I look at the city owned, I think, once we make some basic improvements, it could be future uses to that.
For other things.
Wait till now, it's just.
Just do it right next to the Tucina.
Okay. Any, uh, comments from anyone? Okay, then let's go ahead and, and move on to, um, we're, we're, uh, developing citywide street striping plan.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this, this item was brought back for discussion. Uh, we, we did the deep, uh, directions from the subcommittee to, you know, develop a, a, a street striping plan. And, um, one of the things we, we looked at, uh, and discussed was to, to better understanding of, um, you know, scope of the plan and, and just give you kind of perspective on, on this, uh, is well, we had a lot of striking done as part of some of our recent improvements, but there's, there's, uh, pretty significant areas within the city that the striking has deteriorated, you know, still, uh, to a point where it really needs to be refreshed. But there's also opportunities to look at whether, a- as we've done with some of the new projects, kind of, uh, new, uh, street striking alignments to better reflect where the travel lanes are and bike lanes. And you kind of see that with where the, uh, existed, the, the kind of historical striking wasn't there and then you transition to kind of the new areas of the boulevard where you do the bike lanes. And you kind of see there's this offset, if you will. So there's it, you know, some of that way to address that is to kind of come up with and identify, uh, uh, kind of enhancements or improvements to the plan to reflect, you know, prove the, the striking for, for, you know, bike lanes connecting to some of those improved areas. So I, I did reach out to W Trans, um, just to, to have, you know, what's, what's kind of the best practice, how we might approach this. You know, simple ways to come up with kind of a spreadsheet or a matrix, identify some areas, come up with cost estimates and then budget accordingly, or do we want to look at more of a comprehensive approach, Joe? I thought I heard you saying, you know, maybe we come up with a more comprehensive plan that we didn't budget annually and we get, you know, a certain amount of kind of striking done. And it's one of those things where ideal, probably when you finish, you kind of, kind of go and be afraid to start, you, you start go. Uh, so, you know, there, there's, there's kinds of different approaches here from, typical to, hey, let's, let's prioritize the downtown or let's prioritize the boulevard between the sections first, looking at a more comprehensive perspective. That would, would, where, and where I go with that is maybe looking at W Trans for qualified outfits to kind of come up with, uh, a list of prioritizing the costs that we, we have for a agent program straight. We just wanted to bring that back for discussion. I don't know if the, that's, if you had, you had some perspectives on that, uh, anything you want to weigh in or share with your, your experience in striking.
Just kind of some initial thoughts. Um, I asked, you know, we, we had a citywide pavement management program in the title. And it doesn't sound like that's the case, but that's, you know, I mean, that's a great way to look at overall pavement condition, uh, deterioration over time. You go last thing you want to do is talk about re-stripping the roads that need to get improved, you know, in a couple of years. Um, a lot of times these pavement management programs can be tied to, you know, old store and water infrastructure that need a replacement. You know, where we don't want to, you know, redo a road and then go in and tap dig up super water some short time thereafter. Um, and so that's kind of a holistic way to tie, you know, but, but again, you know, then you're talking about cost. Um, the, a pavement management program is not cheap to implement. But there's software and, and, you know, getting some of that shipped off. Um, a lot of cities use a pavement management program and there's very software that can control that. Uh, and so taking a step back and doing kind of systematic citywide approach, I really like that idea. Um, you know, you need to kind of evaluate on a case by case basis, pavement condition, underlying infrastructure conditions and that kind of thing. Um, without too much of a hurdle. Um, then you get into, you know, we're talking about thermoplastic strapping, we're talking about painted strapping, a big cost difference there. Um, and so, you know, just kind of considerations like that, including, um, the block dots, the buttons and that kind of thing. Um, and, and what is that looking like? It's, the strapping is not, it's not just a totally cut and dry, uh, issue, but you know, it, it can certainly be looked at.
I know at one, at one point we had our streets, um, graded like eighty to whatever the, um, grading was, and we knew which ones needed work and which ones we needed to maintain so that they won't deteriorate. Um, now, I don't know if that's why we created the program, but we might already have the files somewhere.
That, that would be, that's the kind of thing that would be good to build off of and incorporate striding.
So, thank you. A couple of things, uh, we used, our public works crew used to go out, uh, maybe once or twice a month and take a couple of intersections and do the actual strapping. My big concern currently is there's some areas that are, should be, with the block dots, should be double yellow lines, that, that they're gone. So we get into a safety issue where you should be regulating traffic, but it's, it's, it's gone. And so people crossing into the middle of the road, basically they're not violation. You know, and then you get into legal aspects. If you cite somebody and you go to court, you lose it because it's not properly marked. So it's, it's getting to a point where it's, it's, it's a safety concern. So I think that should be the highest priority. And I think looking at Cloverdale Boulevard and City of both Pacurio Street, really needs to be looked at. And the block dots need to be replaced. And I know that's a cost, but it really, I, I think our, our in-house crew could do that kind of work. Not every day, but take one or two days a month and just hit it. And, uh, and these are safety things. We have stop that's scheduled, that's stated almost unratable on the ground. Again, that's safety. Somebody doesn't see it and they go through it. Boom. And so, so I'm more, as much as we need to do a full striping plan, we need to just really address some of the, the, some of the safety issues that are out there. Uh, getting to the street condition, I was gonna ask maybe for our next meeting when we get to the future, but we got this, uh, I believe everybody got it, but our streets are at risk based on the reports from the, uh, it was, uh, let me see, it was the Bay Area jurisdiction twenty twenty pavement report. And we're listed in there at Cloverdale, many other cities are. But we're at risk. We have sixty four point seven miles of total land. And we have, uh, we're at the at-risk level. And it goes all the way up, very good, down to four, and we're just one above four at risk. So I think I say that because we do need to come up with a plan. Maybe not do a full city striping, just do the safety areas and live on today, moving forward. But we really need to look at a plan to fix our streets and, and that's possible. Even though with this new infrastructure money that's being released, we may be able to access some of that with some, some, with some grant applications. But we need to start, whether it's even, you know, eight blocks in one year, every year for the next ten years. But we need to do something to start fixing that. Because we have streets that are very much becoming very deteriorating. And as you know, if you go seriously, you don't see a low street, they, they deteriorate where now you gotta tear them all out and the cost just goes right through the roof. So I really think we need to kind of get our arms around this plan and break these streets and figure out each year, put money in the budget, it's got it, it's got to move forward. And it puts its position to apply for funds, but they become available as well. So I guess I, I've kind of rambled in on a lot of different areas, but really the immediate need is the safety issue. Uh, the missing block dots that really should be double yellows are gone in many of the places. They need to be replaced ASAP. And faded stops need to be fixed. So, and then, but the log charts, they need to come up with. So that's where I was coming from.
And you know, David, our public works folks and, and, uh, talks and press folks, they drive around town. I mean, they could surely come back with a couple of intersections, we see painted or striping.
Yeah, it, you know, it's one aspect of it, uh, uh, and if we can actually start putting that together is kind of the, the next piece to it is, you know, what's the cost?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and then how do we, how do we, you know, the scheduling, prior presentation has been that worked out. I think it's, uh, area two, we, we need to look internally to, uh, I, I think our sprayer, as I've been told, I haven't seen it, but it's pretty outdated, so it takes us that.
Yeah.
Get a new one and it's maybe really be more efficient. Um, but I also think sometimes with the, with the strapping company, if we were to develop an area, uh, in concrete list, we might be able to really tackle.
A big chunk.
A big chunk, uh, with, you know, like a one-time, uh, that, you know. With a one-time contract, you need to get a lot of that, um, maybe just efficiency.
But like Vanessa said, if we don't want to spray and paint, then they can wait and have to do street work and tear it all out too. So that's why it's really, and then we mentioned earlier that PG need to do some work up there. You know, if there's a way to collaborate and work with them, when we know they're doing these things, it's their work we need to do to come back behind it and try to minimize our costs. Yeah. So, so again, I, I really support the plan. I really think we need to do that based on this report. And I think we should talk about that a little bit more, uh, in the future. But, but the plan, but the immediate need is to take care of the safety. I mean, the WL line means you don't cross. And when the block dots are missing and it's open, there's no WL line, you can cross. And that's, that's serious. And, uh, I'll leave it at that.
And you said Cloverdale on the football.
Those are the two materials that are heavily traveled. You know, there's a lot of the documents that go on these. Yeah. So if you just take, just take the right down, you'll see a lot of documents.
Anything else from the table or? Oh, nothing. Thank you. Okay, then, uh, when we move on to Porterfield Creek? And Kevin, David, Hector, who's there?
Well, I, I, I'll start and Hector, I know you're, you gotta jump on a mid-term meeting very soon. Uh, maybe a, a brief status update on the, uh, edge management, you know, phase one of your vegetation management program and, uh, you know, the work you've been doing and working with, uh, uh, the Northern Sonoma County Fire District Fuels Crew.
Sure. Yes, just, just briefly, uh, so progress can, uh, progress continued to be made on, on, on the face one of Porterfield Creek Open Space Vegetation Management Program work. Uh, Northern Sonoma County Fire District Fuels Crew is making a significant progress on limiting up trees and removing dead vegetation um, within the open space, uh, with a goal of to reduce the extent of ladder fuels. Um, for the most part, the fuels, the fuels crew are chipping and mulching access vegetation on site, which is expected to improve the soil health. Uh, I've been collaborating with Cowfire staff and, and, uh, and Cloverdale Fire Department uh, with the effort. Uh, uh, and, uh, the vegetation management program includes the proposed use of controlled burns to reduce, uh, pretty much what the plan is to chip, grind and shred uh, the vegetation that, that we can get to. And the, the rest of the plan is to, uh, later on, create approved manageable piles to perform controlled burns. Uh, when we get to that point, uh, right now, I'm in the process, I'm the current process of pulling it or acquiring a burn permit with the help of the Fire Department. Uh, what, what I suggest we should do when we get to that point is to maybe send a, uh, a Nixle Alert, maybe work with a police chief there to, to let the community know that for those two or three specific days, um, there's, there could be some smoke when we get to that point where we're burning, especially the residents from, uh, from Del Webb. Uh, I, I briefly spoke to Rick Blackman, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Fire Marshal, and he's gonna work with me to pick out uh, the days that I guess that the wind blows a different direction, so the wind doesn't blow, we gotta pick a day to where the wind blows, I guess, west instead of, instead of east. So, uh, so we don't, so we get less smoke for the Del Webb residents and, 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 uh, and all the residents near that area. But yeah, we're making a tremendous, we're making a tremendous, tremendous progress out there. And, uh, i- if you guys have some time, I think it would be good to maybe swing by there and make a, pay a visit over there. It's, it's looking great.
Thank you. I, I did get an opportunity to see it before, so I will make time to go up and see it after. Thank you for all your.
Anything else we sat on this topic? Anybody need a comfort break? We're going on two and a half hours here. You don't? Okay. How about standard, uh, standing and, uh, continued items? Anything to report on any of them? If not, we'll just skip over them.
Chair, just in, in the, uh, in the fact that it's the, the meeting minutes for the last Division Zero project. If, if it's okay with the subcommittee, we'll just, and when they have meetings, we'll include the minutes and, and it provides kind of a summary update on the amount of projects that, 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 that project has been led up by, we have the help, the city department help to reduce traffic fatalities in the community. Create opportunities there, just keep, keep track of it.
I'm fine with that. Uh, Bob, do you have a comment on that? Joe?
No, uh, okay.
Anything else you want to share with us on that? Any notes?
No, no further report, Chair.
How about future agenda items? I have a couple of them. Joe, will you go first?
All right. Thank you. Uh, I just, I'd like to get an update on the Rule Twenty Eight for credit with the California Public Utilities Commission. And we have that report. There was a certain amount of money that we, uh, they're gonna reallocate if it's not used.
Underground?
It was eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And this is, uh, you will be receiving your last annual Rule Twenty Eight work credit allocation twenty twenty-two. That's, yeah. So anyway, I'd like to know where that's at. Do you agree with that, E. G.?
Is that from undergrounding though? Is that from Underground Underground?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is in reference to, uh, Underground Utility District.
Right.
Uh, and what, what, what we, we have to have done is actually establish the, the UUD, um, which would, uh, it, it needs to secure our funds from being reallocated. And so, uh, part of what, what's that different for, just the idea of establishing even a small district to ensure that we, our funds, our funds don't get reallocated. It's once you, once you establish a district, it will, it will kind of get shaped. It sounds like, um, it's going to work, they work its way through the CPUC process, but PG can revise this whole Rule 28, uh, process and, and probably we're going to see something quite different come out of it. Um, I don't think it's been particularly, a particularly effective program. Um, and, uh, it's, we felt a lot of interest in kind of retaining, changing the way PG collects the music, you know, outtakes money and, and so that, that's a miss and profit. But we, we can bring it back with the.
Yeah, don't we have one of, right there on the south side?
Uh, no, not yet, but, uh, did I, did I send you those staff reports when we brought this to council?
When we were supposed to?
Yeah, we brought forward, uh, we proposed districts, but we, I think, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I just remember this when we got briefed on this. I hate to lose the, you know, money kind of reallocated if there's a way that we can say that and use it.
Not to say we want to spend any money, but it wouldn't be the entire amount there we're going to reallocate. It's a, it was a pretty small portion, but we, this has been on my list for a long time, so I'll.
I just, like, in a way, we could put it under just updates. You know, so we get a better understanding of this and all. The other thing would be, uh, I just want to thank Vanessa and Hector as well, uh, for the detailed, uh, report on the East Second Street sidewalk and asphalt condition. And that is a, a real issue that needs to be addressed sooner than later. Uh, I'm concerned about a safety issue there. Uh, I said I'm a reported director for eleven years and I've seen many planes come through with those types of situations. So there, there are no way, so we need to get out of there.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we're, we're going to work on a, a proposal, I think, uh, but our staff's already working on it. You know, I think more of the issue is the tree and rebuilding up, you know, planting something that's not there.
Well, we'll replace them with something.
Right.
Hector made a recommendation, I think, but this is a safety issue. We can't worry about trees at least at this point. I think that was it.
I just have a couple of, I'd like to be at some point given an update on Six Acres. I don't know where we are with that. And, um, I, I read an email, uh, the end of last week about the, uh, First Street Bridge, the Crawford Bridge. And, um, I, I just want to make sure that we stay part of that conversation because one of the things I think we're still looking to do is hang a water pipe underneath that bridge. And I'm not sure if they're going to hang us for the course of that or if they're going to put it in. I envision that just being capped on either end, but it's there in case we ever decide to drop a well on that east side. We've already got the mechanism to pump over the plant. So, um, I think we need to be involved with that. And then lastly, um, staff is really thin, uh, but the beginning of the year, um, I think, um, this will probably be our last meeting for the year because every other month, I'd like to see us move monthly. The next meeting will be in January and then staff permitting, time permitting, agendas permitting. I'd like to see it move monthly.
And, and Chair, just what, what about relative to that is we, the, uh, staff will be bringing forward in, in at least the start discussions on committee assignments and, uh, uh, you know, the annual, yes, priority process of New East Council Rivers and the wish that committees they want to work on, uh, or participate on. And then we bring that app.
Sure.
And as part of that process, then whomever is likely to kind of determine the timing of the meetings and the frequency. So my, my thought would be.
Wait till then.
That, that we kind of bring that up as part of that conversation. But then, then it's a, a question of, um, you know, ultimately we set the meeting as a resolution. Uh, yeah, we know that.
I'm, I'm probably waiting till then. Um, if I'm not elected, I'm still probably going to make some suggestions because of the, the workflow that we have. Uh, I, I, I just think every other month is two. I don't know how you feel, uh.
Well, I think that's good and if we don't have to work, we could always cancel.
Can't say anything.
It's here to cancel it on the schedule.
Well, I mean, just like Six Acres, I don't know when we got the last update. I think it was at the full city council, but that, I, I thought was going to be outstanding. I just, just for a quick update.
I think Six Acres is, I think Dan had him on the planet, isn't it?
Oh, exactly. Okay. I don't know. You were on that. I'm there. Okay. All right, let's scratch that. So we need to add notes. And how about the pipe one with the bridge? That's, uh.
Well, we, we, uh, we, you know, one of the things that just in reference to that, we'll bring back that item, uh, Chair. Uh, you know, in that quarter fund, they didn't ask whether there's a set plan that, that Chair, that they, they hadn't, you know, ready yet. So, uh, I, I think that's where we'll want to really take a look at, um, and, and that. It's of, of, uh, concurrent importance, I think, too, with, with the pedestrian slash bike pool trail connection is how it's going to interrelate with, uh, both River Park, uh, uh, First Street and, and Austin. So all those pieces, uh, you know, something in the area where we probably need to talk, talk a little bit about, um, traffic safety as well, uh, it's a lot of time commission, a lot of conversation around that, that whole intersection. So I, I think it's an opportunity, especially for the, to have a conversation about, you know, there's, there's, there's a county improving, but how do we want that to tie in and relate to, uh, other, uh, traffic improvements, industry improvements that we'd like to see in that, that vicinity. There, you know, there was concerns about traffic safety too, cars driving fast, you know, what are some of the other things that we want to look at? You know, the, well, the, the, no, nothing, the, the plants of water is important as part of that.
Yeah. Well, we're definitely on the, on the east side of the bridge, on the county way. You just can't dump people onto the pop low gravel thing. They've, they've got to pave a little way down there on, on both sides of the thing. They, they figure it out as long as we're still involved with that plan. So I, I'm just excited that it might come to fruition.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a long, long.
Yeah, well, they committed to us.
I remember meeting with Supervisor, at the time Supervisor, uh, out there, yeah, working on that.
Three days.
And that was many years ago. And then with Supervisor Dorr, yeah, that's all in, uh, it's been, but it's finally coming.
I looked at that last time I was with you guys.
Yeah. Okay. So the only thing I wanted to clarify, if I could, is on the, uh, uh, city park, not just city park, but city parks, just the review of that. I'd like to see that, maybe a special meeting of our group to, uh, to go over all the parks with, with an eye towards some of the, the humanities that we were talking about.
Yeah.
Because I would like, I, I'd like to see some things happen in a timely way that we don't even make. Uh, as you mentioned, things get put on a shelf, we all get busy and months become multi-months or years. And, and it just takes, there's things we can get, uh, this, this, do it.
And David, I, I don't know if the, the staff has to run around doing inventory on all the parks and what we have in there. I think you said that.
No, I think just, we, we know it's there. Just talk about it. We got this nice.
Yeah. There's just too much green area.
And you and I walked all those parks way back when we did the plan. So very familiar, but just to kind of lay out, uh, plans and we can go back to the full council plan, uh, especially when it comes to what the dog parks, but also pickleball and basketball in those areas. As you worked here, it was a big desire.
Well, the other thing I'd like, you know, I mean, I know we're talking with Smart, uh, about a potential dog park there. I think Kevin, you and I had talked about on the north side of, uh, of, uh, City Street Drive, letting, or getting Smart put a parking lot in because they're going to need it eventually anyhow. And maybe the developer of that, those seventy-five units could have an open flow. This is fifty-one cars that don't have parking lots on that project. And if there was a parking lot across the street by Smart, after all, it is T O D. Um, um, no, it's, can't see it.
T O D.
Yeah, T O D, I'm sorry. Um, you know, the parking lot now would really help off this new development. If their goal clearly is, you know, identity house along the Smart tracks. I bring them over. Anything, anything else from anyone good of the, good of the order?
You know, if you're close to the airport, you could have had that big renovation.
We could have had that, that park there with the luma. So, okay, if there's nothing else, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Uh, I want to thank you for taking the minutes.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, yes, and staff, thank you for being well prepared. And thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, hopefully. Meeting adjourned.